I'd like to call the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, January 15th to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Malcho.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran. Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie. Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Present.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Ritchie, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to remove item number three for later discussion, please.
So, item three on the consent calendar. We will tuck that under unfinished business and we'll park that after item number 12. Okay, so all those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, the agenda is approved. Next, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council, three-minute limit per person or five minutes of representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you'd like to show video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM at the end of Business Day to the City Clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Before we start, I just want to make a quick comment that I know many of you may be here to give comment. I see road improvements and question road widening on here. The council has made no decisions. We haven't even had a discussion on that. So if you're here hearing things about four and six lanes and dollars, there has been absolutely no discussion by the council on that subject matter. So that would be for a later time. I just want to be sure that's clear so that if you're directing council or questions related to road widening, we haven't had that discussion yet. So our first is Nicole Steinbach.
Chrissy.
Yeah.
The lights.
There aren't any lights.
You didn't push. Oh, she just changed her light.
Hi, I'm representing an organization, so do I get five minutes on my timer?
What organi-- sorry.
East Lake Little League.
Sure.
Thank you. So hi, I am Nicole Steinbach. I'm a Samamish resident and I'm representing East Lake Little League tonight. East Lake Little League is requesting that the city council approve $66,000 for foul ball netting at East Samamish Park. So the background on that. East Lake Little League is a nonprofit organization in our community. We are run by volunteers and we had 600 children in our league last year. East Lake Little League is representing children in North Samamish. There's also Samamish Little League, which is Southern Samamish. So the 600 players either played T-ball, baseball, or softball, so we have boys and girls in our league. Our girls softball team last year won the Washington State Championship. And back in 2013, our boys went to the World Series, which is quite a big deal. Some of them are now getting college scholarships for their baseball playing. But winning baseball games isn't the goal or the objective of our little league. It's developing the character of our players in our community so they're great future One of the things that I'm really proud of is that East Lake Little League keeps our player fees due really low, so about $100 to $300 depending on the league that you're playing in. We also have family max and we have financial aid, so if children or their families are unable to play, the children can still play. What I want to talk to you today is my happy place. So this is an overhead view of East Samamish Park. This is where my boys play baseball in the spring. While I'm there, I get to cheer them on, I get to talk to my neighbors. I really love it. And I'm not alone. In our survey, parents, their favorite thing about Little League was the community. And for the players, it's their friends. So they're really saying the same thing. The problem that I want to talk to you today is about foul ball safety. So foul balls coming from a baseball field is an inherent risk in baseball. It's something everyone understands. But we have a really interesting situation here where the two fields are very close to each other. So not only do you have balls coming from your front, you have balls coming from behind you. In June last year, we had a mom who was hit by a foul ball in the back of her head and suffered a serious concussion. She's going to talk about that experience now.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, my name is Caroline Rousch. And on June 6th, I was at my son's--
Address for the record.
Oh, okay. I was at my son's baseball game at ESP.
Address, sorry, address.
Oh, sorry. 23--
My address? Yes, please.
23269 Northeast 17th Street, Samamish. I was at my son's baseball game on June 6th at ESP. And I was sitting in the bleachers watching my son's game when a foul ball came from the field behind me and hit me right here on my head. I ended up with a severe headache that lasted for three weeks. And I ended up with two trips to the doctor, a trip to the emergency room, going through an entire Costco-sized bottle of ibuprofen, another bottle of Tylenol during that time period. I missed multiple events in my children's lives. And the headache that I had was just unbearable. I have never experienced pain like that before in my life. I've been told I was very lucky that the ball hit me right here and not in a more sensitive area like my temple or other parts of your head that might be more vulnerable. So my main reason for being here is just to convey that this is a danger. And I see multiple foul balls hit into the stands when watching baseball games there. And I just don't want this to happen to anybody else or to a child. Kids are out there playing all the time in between the stands, oblivious to things. So I did not-- and I didn't have any warning. This was just it. All of a sudden, no one yelled heads that time. So I didn't have any idea it was coming. So, thank you.
So, East Lake Little League made the Parks Department aware of this back in June. And I've been on the board of East Lake Little League since October. So we've worked with them and they've developed four design options, which we've sent to the city council members. East Lake Little League is requesting that the council members approve $66,000 for option four in that packet. The reason why we want to do that option is it gives full coverage of that seating area. Are there any questions? I don't know if you guys ask questions.
We don't typically interact--
Okay.
--during public comment.
Okay.
But Mr. City Manager, do you want to kind of give us, and for the public as well as council, some-- an overview as far as, I'm assuming this is in the Parks Commission based on what I saw in the email earlier today. And normally those things eventually come to council, but it's not before us currently.
It's not on your agenda tonight. We are looking at these issues. We're looking at the options and particularly the options you've mentioned, as well as some others. We have to make sure that whatever we do will meet the standards that we're going to need, not only to protect individuals, but any liability issues that may be involved in this. As soon as we get those recommendations, those will be coming forward and we'll be seeking council action on how we proceed.
Very good. So I think we'll eventually get the recommendation. We don't have it yet.
Do you have an idea of timeline?
That I don't.
Well, we hope that we get something in place before your season starts.
Okay, that would be excellent. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Valderrama.
We did have an incident similar to this three years ago where the East Lake soccer team came forward because they were having parents bombarded with lacrosse balls from next door. And the city went through the same process and eventually put up some nets to protect them on there. So there is a precedent on how this is done. And then the council did not see it again until budget request time.
Yeah. Well, I think you can easily see the dilemma that they're talking about. And we'll just need to come up with the appropriate solution and see if we can get that fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have David Steele, followed by Matt Szent and Tyler Whitney.
Dave Steele, do you need my address?
Yes, please.
Okay, 2203 Sahali Drive East. And I'm here representing the Board of Sahali Neighborhood Association, which is called the Sahali Maintenance Association. And I'm speaking basically about the potential for making adjustments on 228th Street from a width point of view. We went through this about two years ago, and I don't know, some of you are new and some of you were there. So without going into all those things, I'll just tell you what we're concerned about. When you look at 228th and you take the 3,000 neighborhood point and go up to 37th, which is going into Timberline, okay, Sahali is basically from 3,000 to 3,400, 3,600 actually. But between 3,000 and 3,400, the ravine comes up next to the road and Sahali is on the other side of the road. So the money it would take to widen that street needs to be really severely looked at as far as what you're getting for the money you're putting out. If you want to take one of the nine holes from Sahali, you could probably do that by eminent domain, but I think that would probably be a really nasty thing to do, to move that fence all the way in. Sahali Green, which is the entrance into that very small neighborhood, which is right next to where the ravine comes up. There's a truck turnaround availability in that area right now, which is barely meeting the minimums. So that fence can't be moved back further into Sahali without making it so you can't turn trucks around, moving trucks and things of that nature, okay? That's one thing, is the money for the, you know, what you're getting for your money. The other thing is, you've got to remember that the borderline for Samamish ends halfway down the hill. And that road is not going to be improved in my lifetime because King County owns it. And so what's the point? You're just moving a bottleneck halfway down the hill. Right now, the bottleneck extends all the way up to Sahali every morning. It flushes out relatively well onto 202, but you're not solving anything. So it becomes a beautification project. So just kind of keep that in your mind. Is it really worth it? You could look at it from a safety point of view by maybe making some-- in places where the land is available, and there are those places, where you could move the bus turnouts maybe a little bit off the road. But four to six lanes is totally not doable in the Sahali area, okay? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. No Matt? Okay. We'll move on to Tyler Whitney.
I don't need the tie. I misunderstood the purpose of the form.
Okay. Mark Batson. Good. Kim Batson.
Oh, I didn't realize that when we were signing the sign-in sheet that, oh, no.
Did you want to speak?
Asking to speak.
No? Okay. Jay Kerschenman?
I'm in the same ball with them.
Okay.
We just signed in.
Signed in, okay.
Hold on, I have a comment.
Yes.
You actually were inaccurate in your statement earlier. November 13th, there was a discussion about this. In fact, we read the statements that were being stated. We're going to be talking about the V over C that specifically impacts Sahali. So when you said that we haven't had a discussion, that was not correct, as they can look online and see the November 13 discussions amongst council, talking about the implication. And the assumption that we don't know what we did is kind of like in Casablanca when they go into the casino and say, "I'm shocked that there's gambling going on at this establishment." So the consequence was known. We know that it's applying to Sahali. So it was inaccurate to say that the discussion, the final, isn't. We're required to do this public hearing. So I just want to make sure that the setting is correct, that they don't get the impression that nothing's been talked about, nothing has been decided. The council did select a V over C. They arbitrarily took a number of 1.1 with a consequence that's in the memo stated by the city manager, so.
So I think what I'm talking about is the email that was sent out to the Sahali residents with your name attached to it.
Yes.
And I think there were some inaccuracies in there as far as what the outcomes could be. We have not had a discussion about what we will do with Sahali. All we know is that Sahali is failing.
Those outcomes and options come directly from the city manager's emails from January 7th.
But that's not the only options out there.
No, but those are the ones that we have from the city. So to pretend that we don't know what's coming is also not correct. I mean, those are the ones that we've been given, the three choices.
I think we floated numbers were in that email. Lanes were floated. We haven't had that discussion up here. We have not had that discussion.
That's correct. Those are what the city has--
That's what I want to be sure is understood by the public, is we as council haven't had that discussion. We can direct our city manager so that we can have that discussion--
That's right.
--which would include the public.
And he framed the three, but we know it's failing because we chose it to fail.
We can have that discussion later, under the public hearing. Okay.
My name's Tom Harmon and I live at 4369 243rd Avenue Southeast in Cloughan East Samamish. I came up, I guess, to talk a little bit about traffic and currency, but that'll come a little bit later. But during public comment, I want to talk a little bit about sewers, that now that we don't have Karen on our board anymore, I try to come up and let you know what's new at the Water and Sewer District. And I've been a Water and Sewer Commissioner for 19 years now. And I'm also a member of the King County Regional Water Quality Committee. That's a committee, a subcommittee of the King County Council. And what I want to talk about a little bit, about something that's happening with sewer service, is King County, we've had a plan to have a northern diversion, which a sewer line would be built to the north. And in one of the meetings, I've noticed that that project was sort of taken off the list. And I think we were getting the same kind of concerns that we, like the bus service that we get, you know, is, is King County forgotten about us or whatever? But we're certainly working to try to see what's happening because what's going to happen is, is we can provide sewer service probably up to the 2030 projections, but if the 2030 projections are going to happen in 2022, we could be very, very close to us. It's like we're going through the 1990s all over again. We had a water moratorium that slowed everything down a little bit. We may have a sewer moratorium that may slow everything down. But we're trying to do, my job's to provide water and sewer service to the community. And talking about a mor-- talking about moratoriums is not what I've come to do. It's come to solving problems. While there's certainly, what I've come here to talk about is, is you're talking to King County council members, bring up the fact that they treat our sewage and it's their responsibility to provide and pay for the lines. They like the northern diversion because then it's pumped up to their Brightwater facility. And then that way, their renting facility could handle growth in Issaquah, Newcastle, that area. Well, what we can do, and we're looking into it, and that's building our own sewage treatment plant. And I think we're talking about northeast Samamish and Issaquah maybe as a more joint. That's nice because in case there's a big earthquake and we lose, we only have the lines to the south. And if we should lose that in an earthquake, we saw what happened in Japan about having six months without any sewer service. You know, we can all talk about, well, we can always get bottled water, but to go a long time without sewer is something that we don't want to really talk about. The other thing we can do, and that, of course, I'll be real quick, that'll increase our rates if we finally build another line to the south and say, "We finally have solved the problem ourselves." That's this cost that King County would normally pay for, that we pay for. And again, there's the possibility of doing. So it's just something out there in the future. I'm talking upon myself. It's not an official water district position because we're doing all that we can, working, and I'll be speaking to the King County RWQC Committee about this, you know, and get it--
Tom, can I get you to wrap up?
Get that northern line prioritized. I'm done.
Thank you. Next, I have Mary Victor.
Good evening. My name's Mary Victor and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. I wanted to touch this evening on how to build community. My husband and I were in San Diego. We went to Balboa Park where they have the UN Houses. And one of the cards in the shop there caught my eye. So this is their input, not mine, but I really liked it. On the back of the card, it says, "Communities exist for the health and enjoyment of those who live in them, not for the convenience of those who drive through them, fly over them, or exploit their real estate with profit." And that's a quote from Theodore Rosack, "Where the Wasteland Ends." But I really liked the front of the card the best, so bear with me. It won't take three minutes. How to build community. Turn off your TV. Leave your house. Know your neighbors. Greet people. Look up when you're walking. Sit on your stoop. Plant flowers. Use your library. Play together. Buy from local merchants. Share what you have. Help a lost dog. Take children to the park. Honor elders. Support neighborhood schools. Fix it, even if you didn't break it. Have potlucks. Garden together. Pick up litter. Read stories aloud. Dance in the streets. Talk to the mail carrier and the garbage man. Listen to the birds. Put up a swing. Help carry something heavy. Barter your goods. Start a tradition. Ask a question. Hire young people for odd jobs. Organize a block party. Bake extra and share. Ask for help when you need it. Open your shades. Sing together. Share your skills. Take back the night. Turn up the music. Turn down the music. Listen before you react to anger. Mediate conflict. Seek to understand. Learn from new and uncomfortable angles. Know that no one is silent, though many are not heard. Work to change this. So in reading this, I want to ask, do we have a city or are we building a city where people will do things that will build community together? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? I want to make sure everyone knows there is a public hearing later where you'll be able to address us specific to the interim development regulations. And that's relative to concurrency.
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd Way. There's a lot of discussions tonight about a lot of stuff. One thing I notice on many of the things that should have safety checked on them is it's not checked on them. Certainly a trail crossing or East Lake-Samamish street crossing, something, excuse me, should have safety checked. The most important thing I want to say is, every decision you make, please consider all of your community, even the ones who cannot come up here and talk. They have no feet. They have no voice. The birds and the bees, the flowers and the trees, the little red fishies, your koconis, they cannot live on concrete. They need nature. We need to provide that for them. I need nature. My family needs nature. And I hope that you'll keep every decision you make. Our city is a natural environment for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our next agenda item. We have a presentation and proclamation. We are proclaiming Health Occupation Students of America Week for March 5th through 9th. And we have a Skyline High School student here who is going to read that proclamation for us. So Queney Nguyen, if you would come up to the podium and read that for us. Thank you.
Do I need to state my address?
That's okay.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Queney Nguyen and I am a junior at Skyline High School, as well as the vice president of Skyline's Club Med. Club Med is a medical club we have at Skyline High School that is affiliated with an international student leadership conference, the Health Occupation Students of America, or HOSA. Through this organization, students such as myself are exposed to healthcare professionals, educated about healthcare issues, provided leadership training, and given the opportunity to put our healthcare skills and knowledge to the test at state and international conferences and competitions. I personally have won three state titles in the past two years and was a 2017 international champion in dental science. And I can attest to the fact that my involvement in the HOSA organization has inspired me to cultivate citizenship, collaborate, and promote excellence in the future healthcare sector. HOSA encourages its chapter to participate in community outreach and education by hosting HOSA Week at local schools. I similarly reached out to the city council a year ago, and we successfully officiated HOSA Week at Skyline High School during the week of March 5th through 9th, 2018. As a result of the proclamation, Skyline High School was recognized at the statewide level as an outstanding HOSA chapter for the first time in our school history. This year, we hope to push this initiative for service and excellence further. On behalf of my chapter, I request that the city of Samamish officially acknowledge the Week of February 3rd through 9th, 2019, as HOSA Week at Skyline High School. As part of Skyline High School's proposed event, my fellow club members and I, alongside our student body, will give back to our local healthcare professionals, present medical procedures and training, host fundraisers for the National Pediatric Cancer Foundation, and raise general awareness and appreciation for our annual credo, "Define Your Purpose." Ultimately, we hope that this year's HOSA Week will enable us to execute personal, purposeful, and meaningful work as future physicians, researchers, and other medical workers. Thus, we ask for the community and the city council's support as we galvanize the values for the next generation of future healthcare professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Queney, did you want to read the actual proclamation for us, or do you want one of us to?
We would like that one of the city council members--
Okay. I gave away the proclamation, Lita. Which council member would like to read one? One of you guys want to read it?
I'll read it, sure.
Okay.
Get your cop drop first.
Although I think this is a tough act to follow. That was very eloquent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Samamish proclamation. Whereas the mission of HOSA is to empower HOSA future health professionals to become leaders in the global health community through education, collaboration, and experience. And whereas the purpose, excuse me, of HOSA organization is to develop leadership and technical HOSA skill competencies through a program of motivation, awareness, and recognition, which is an integral part of the health science education instructional program. And whereas the students of our Samamish high schools, in order to satisfy the ambitious mind to promote health sciences awareness and in accordance with the Washington Career and Technical Sports Medicine Association and Health Occupation Students of America, mission statements and governing bodies do hereby adopt a constitution for Club Med. And whereas through these organizations, students are exposed to healthcare professionals, educated about healthcare issues, provided leadership training, and given the opportunity to put their healthcare skills, knowledge to the test at state and international conferences. Whereas this year will be the second year hosting HOSA Week, the club has agreed they again would include a request that the city of Samamish officially acknowledge the Week to facilitate community involvement. And whereas the city of Samamish endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of our Samamish high schools' HOSA Club Med, and in doing so, commits itself to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and support for our students. Now, and therefore, on behalf of the city of Samamish, the city council, we do hereby proclaim the Week of February 3rd through February 9th, 2019, as Club Med HOSA Week.
Thank you, city health.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the consent calendar is approved. Okay, next we will have our public hearing. This is adopting interim development regulations regarding the transportation concurrency and level of service for road corridors and segments as authorized by the Growth Management Act. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On October 20th, you did approve ordinance 2018-477-- On October the 20th, you did approve ordinance 2018-477. This was your interim development regulations, which revised your code to establish road corridor and segment levels of service standards. That set your standards at 1.1 for corridors and 1.4 for the segments on city arterials. The roadway standards are applied both in the AM and PM peak hours, as defined by the city's traffic model, in each direction. East Lake-Sammamish Parkway Northeast and East Lake-Sammamish Parkway Southeast corridors and segments are excluded from concurrency. This is an emergency ordinance, so therefore you must either move this into a permanent ordinance before May 1st, 2018, or it will automatically expire unless it's repealed previous to that point. You do not, and we do not have action on this item for you this evening, other than the public hearing, which is required, because as part of the process, when you adopted those, that was required to be held within 60 days. And that's why we're here this evening to receive public testimony on this ordinance.
Very good. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make a clarification that East Lake-Sammamish Parkway is not actually excluded from concurrency. It is excluded from the volume over capacity calculation, that the intersection level of service concurrency still does apply to East Lake-Sammamish Parkway. So we have not exempted any roads, segments, or corridors from concurrency.
Councilmember Valderrama, did you have a question?
And likewise, that can be as can, that any road or segment that council chooses can also be taken off the list from being measured, including Sahale and the others. Likewise, we can have different measures for the V over C on different segments or roads if we choose.
And just to clarify, Mr. City Manager, we are not required to take any action. The councils are already taking the action on this. This is the public hearing for the action we have already voted on.
That is correct.
Just for clarification.
That is correct.
Councilmember Ritchie, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Not a question, but in the beginning of the meeting, there was a little bit of a back-and-forth. Mayor Malchow made a comment about whether or not we had discussed, or six lanes, or all these other propositions. This is more for the people here. I think it's really important that we have these public opportunities, these public comments, so people can speak their mind. So people can put these ideas out there, that if you want six lanes, if you don't want six lanes, if you want no changes, if you want something else, this is your opportunity to speak out and talk about these issues. We've had these regulations out here for a while now, and it's, hopefully, if you're interested, you've had a chance to read through them, and if it matters to you, maybe it's something that you have an opinion about. If you live along one of these roads, it may be important to you. But I think whether or not we've had an opportunity to actually put a piece of, an ordinance or something out there, we have had discussions about what we do now, now that we have this new concurrency model in place. It has created some things we need to deal with. And one of them is along Sahale Way. So I think it's important that if you had the time, that you made the time to come here tonight, speak your piece. Say whatever it is that's important to you. What would you do along that road to increase volume, increase speed or safety getting up and down the road and getting out to 202? And the gentleman that spoke before, we do have issues along, you know, outside of our city boundary that kind of are a little out of our control. We can have some input, some impact, but that really isn't what our concurrency model is about. So I would hope that if you took the time to come tonight, that you would come up to the podium and tell us what you think and what you would do and what matters to you and your family and your home. Thank you.
So to that end, I will open the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak. Do we have a list? So I'm going to go ahead and officially open the public hearing. If you didn't have an opportunity to write your name on the list, I'll call at the end for anyone else that would like to come up and speak. Thank you. Kevin Jones.
Good evening, Council. Kevin Jones, Principal at Transpo Group. My address is 12131 113th Avenue Northeast, Suite 203 in Kirkland. On behalf of STCA, I wanted to take this opportunity to summarize the memo I emailed Council earlier today, particularly the two main points. I also plan to provide the City Clerk with extra copies of this memo following my remarks tonight. In mid-November 2018, I provided Council with a memo in which I identified several reasons why none of the roadway level of service or LOS methodologies considered at that time should be used for concurrency testing purposes. These included methodologies from the Florida DOT, the Highway Capacity Manual, or HCM, and a hybrid described as HCM+. At council direction, city staff advanced the HCM methodology with modifications to the HCM's generalized service volumes to try and account for existing left and right turn lanes, medians, flashing yellow arrows, and intelligent transportation system or ITS technologies. However, these modifications do not overcome two major defects in the city's volume-to-capacity or VC standards. First, the roadway capacity estimates in the interim development regulations considerably underestimate existing capacity throughout the city, including Sahale Way Northeast. And second, the adopted VC standards for roadway corridors and segments are largely arbitrary. To briefly summarize my memo, the city's roadway capacity estimates continue to considerably underestimate actual capacity, as evidenced by peak hour traffic counts the city had collected in 2016. It's remarkable to me, the number of locations where existing directional peak hour traffic volumes exceed the estimated capacity based on this adopted methodology. I've raised this issue several times, and to my knowledge, no one on staff or part of the city's consultant team have disputed this fundamental issue. The city is now using roadway capacity estimates that bear very little resemblance to actual peak hour capacities. And nevertheless, the city is now using these considerable underestimates of capacity to test whether development applications can proceed or not. Compounding this problem, the city has set uniform VC standards of 1.1 or less for roadway corridors and 1.4 or less for roadway segments. These standards are based largely on guesswork or intuition, rather than any type of objective or rigorous assessment about what the appropriate VC threshold should be, especially since the capacity figures are so considerably underestimated. More variable standards, as recommended by the city's own consultant, would acknowledge the unique character of each principal and minor arterial and its surrounding conditions. Together, these two defects result in a transportation concurrency test that is highly suspect and prioritizes perception over reality. We strongly urge council to reconsider the roadway capacity estimates, as well as the adopted VC standards for both corridors and segments. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Harmon. Tom will be followed by Shane McTaggart, and then Greg Kip.
I'm Tom Harmon, living at 4369 243rd Avenue Southeast, and that's Kohani-Sammamish. And basically, talking of a couple of issues on transportation, which I basically came up tonight representing myself. And I think the first thing is, looking at road standards and making sure we don't get into the problems that we did in the early 90s, when King County kind of threw concurrency under the bus and said, "We know there's a lot of traffic, but we'll lower the standards to keep growth going." And that's why 228 stayed at a two-lane road for so long and what precipitated. We better incorporate a city and get control over it. A lot of my concern is Beaver Lake Drive and the barricades. And there's been a lot of talk in the neighborhood of lowering the standards of Beaver Lake Drive to maybe justify. But to go from the road the way it's designed now to the amount of traffic, if those barricades were removed, it would definitely, you're talking about 10 to 15 times. I don't have any numbers, but I think a study would need to be done, looking at the impact on traffic and also what that would do to the intersection of Southeast 24th and 228th. Another issue from a more personal thing is watching the traffic on, where I travel all the time is Isiqua-Pine Lake Road, and what's happened since the traffic lights were put in at the Brookshire intersection and Southeast 48th. One of the reasons that you're always backed up on those two lights, and not backed up at Kohani, Kohani light was designed in such a way that they'll get three or four cars stacked up before it trips the light. So maybe you might have 30 or 40 extra seconds if you're going down Kohani Boulevard and, say, taking a left turn. But on the other hand, traffic flow is a lot better through Isiqua-Pine Lake Road. That's, I think, something you watch the, there's one car at Brookshire, and the whole thing goes through, the whole cycle of left turns and everything else, and the traffic can back up all the way from Brookshire back to Kohani. So I think there needs to be some engineering done on that light and the 48th light. Another thing I've noticed on the Kohani light is if I want to make a right turn, it doesn't trip the light. So I have to take a right turn and go into traffic because, or I'd have to get into the more left lane to trip the light, and then take a right turn out of the left lane. So that's the, maybe a little tiny complaint about the Kohani light, but that's been an advantage, is the Kohani light, which has been there for 20 years, as I think, working a lot better. And I think it's something to look at the timing of the lights and so forth. I'm saying it's an internal problem, not, we all talk about the external traffic problems. That's something I think needs to be looked into.
Thank you, Tom. Greg Kip.
Thank you. I think you had Shane McTaggart on first, but that's fine.
Oh, okay.
No, I apologize. I just didn't realize what the sign-up was for.
Okay.
My name is Greg Kip. My address is, excuse me, 3011 211th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. And I am here to speak on the interim development regulations for the roadway VC level of service I don't fully understand all of the technical aspects of this, but one of the things that I'm asking is, among the alternatives that you have to consider, is that you either remove Sahale Way from the concurrency model, as you have done, whatever the technical term is, that you have done with East Lake-Sammamish Parkway. Or, if this solves the problem, increase the VC ratio to 1.4, which would allow Sahale Way not necessarily to have an expansion of four to six lanes going down to 202, but rather some minor improvements. As I said, I live in Sahale. I've lived there for 15 years. I go in and out every day, all times of the day. And quite frankly, it's not that bad. Yes, it does get congested at times, but it eases up. You can get in and out. And compared to other jurisdictions, and we're all in this urban growth area, compared to other jurisdictions, it's not a bad stretch of road to get down. The real bottleneck is down on 202 and getting out. So if you're widening Sahale Way and the northern part of 228, you're essentially moving the bottleneck down maybe half a mile. It's going to be terribly expensive to do that, and it's going to run up against some significant environmental constraints on the downslope there of Sahale Way, on that steep slope, which in the past has failed. I'd like to talk just a little bit about Sahale, or excuse me, Sammamish in a regional context. We are part of the urban growth area for King County. As such, we're a city, and we're expected to take our fair share of the growth. With growth comes some traffic congestion. We're not up here, isolated, where we can ignore our responsibility to take that growth and deal with the traffic congestions. Traffic concurrency can help mitigate that somewhat, but the traffic concurrency needs to be reasonable. It sounds like, from listening to the folks from Transpo, that there's a lot of concern about whether or not the current analysis that's being used by the city really is accurate. The city currently has some of the most stringent development regulations, which is, in effect, creating moratorium here in the city of Sammamish. Between the tree retention ordinance, the setbacks required for residential development, your density calculations, there's essentially a moratorium up here. Sammamish is not accepting its fair share of the growth right now. So I digress a little bit, but I ask again, that you, whatever alternative you come up with, that you don't consider widening Sahale Way.
I do need you to wrap up, if you would.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council for this public hearing? If you just want to queue up along the wall, and the first person up there can go ahead and speak, and just go ahead and line up, please. Thank you. Go ahead. Yep.
Mark Batson. I live at 21819 Northeast 30th Place in Sahale in Sammamish. Just had a couple of questions, and I know that's not a question and answer session, but a couple of years ago, when we looked at doing this project here at the city on the 228th, there was a meeting with the actual traffic people here in the city, and they came by and had quite a conversation. And it was very helpful to explain some of these meaningful, you know, what the calculations meant and so forth. Are we going to do that kind of thing again? Do we, can you answer that? Is that the plan?
We're not there yet. I think that was...
But in theory, that should happen.
Absolutely. There's always a public process. We're just not there yet.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's my question. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea Spuditch. I live at 2409 209th Avenue Northeast, Sammamish, that is in the Sahale community. I am a new resident to this area. I've lived all around the United States, as well as overseas. And I can tell you, it is a breath of fresh air to be able to live here. However, as a new resident of five months, I'm very disappointed to hear about this wonderful place I live, potentially turning into a growth haven development, at the expense of some of these charming neighborhoods along the way. I too am a resident who drives in and out of the community at all different times of day. And I will tell you, from a safety standpoint of view, I have concerns what exists now. And adding to more development expansion along, whether it's four or six lanes or whatever, is even more of a concern. What I would encourage the council, as they start to study their issues, is to really consider, in essence, the balance of not only the community, the balance of obviously the responsibility with growth, but to consider first, what can be fixed before the first solution is just to expand. I think that would be a little bit premature. I think there are some things, although I'm not a traffic expert by any stretch of the imagination, I will tell you, there are things that I think can be done in terms of stoplights, in terms of timing of stoplights, in terms of flow of traffic patterns that can be addressed before expansion is a solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jim Malini. I live at 2915 Sahale Drive East. So I'm very close to Sahale Way 228th. First, thanks for letting us know, Ramiro, about what's going on. I appreciate the, you know, us being kept up to date. I did want to provide a perspective on this from the standpoint of people who live in the Sahale development, because I bike, I bus, and I drive back and forth every day. So, you know, I have three different perspectives on how the traffic is. First, I'll say, if you look at the bus schedules, the bus there outside the gate at Sahale arrives three minutes early every day, which means it can't be that congested if the bus is routinely arriving early at the stops up there. But maybe it is. I'd also like to point out, we do have a lot of senior citizens in the neighborhood over there. I'm very concerned for two things. First off, people living on a fixed income are going to be severely impacted by some type of significant tax increase. Additionally, a lot of people who are senior citizens driving in and out of the neighborhood are going to be severely impacted by the construction that would be required all up and down Sahale Way. And, you know, from that perspective, I'm worried about the increase in accidents and injuries as a result of people who are, you know, trying to get back and forth to home in a situation where there's going to be a huge amount of construction. And finally, from my perspective of going up and down Sahale Way on both, you know, on a bus, a bike, and a car, the real issue is, you know, when it gets down to 202. And I haven't seen the kinds of impacts that this traffic study seems to indicate. And maybe one of the other things they should consider is opening up the lanes they've closed off in the neighboring developments that give you alternate paths down to the Redmond community, because we've got an entire street blocked... And maybe one of the other things they should consider is opening up the lanes they've closed off in the neighboring developments that give you alternate paths down to the Redmond community, because we've got an entire street blocked off. There is no chance to get to Redmond unless you're either taking the Linwood Hill, Inglewood Hill Road, or going down Sahali Way. What about through the neighborhood? Look at options, because, you know, the concern is a major, a major change to Sahali Way will have a lot of, I think, unintended consequences that are going to be adverse for the people in Samamish. And like so many other, like all of you here, I really do love living in Samamish. I think it's a great community. I'm just worried more about the growth, especially the growth that, you know, continues to go south, which is impacting our ability to have a great neighborhood. So, you know, once again, that's kind of the perspective. I hope you consider those things as you look at this study and look at ways that we can improve the ability to folks to get in and out. Because right now, I don't see the kinds of impacts that the traffic study is indicating or predicting as far as Sahali Way goes. I can always get out there. I don't need a light to get out from my neighborhood. I can get down the hill. And it's been generally safe whether I'm in a car or on a bike. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Jake Hirschenman. I live at 2319 Sahali Drive West in Sahali. And I'm not a traffic guy. I'm not a city council government guy. It's my first meeting I've ever been to, and I've learned a lot of things already in my half hour being here. And one of the things is terminology, you know, this formula ratio of V over C or 1.4 to, I don't get that. I don't understand when you say you haven't talked about it, but then it sounds like this conversation's been going on for a long time. And there has been conversations about it, but maybe not in a certain format. And when I look at this issue, I see you have volume of cars that need to get up and down Sahali Way, and there's not, and we don't have control over the bottom of Sahali Way. So I'm not really clear, or I don't feel overly confident in this process that we're going down about coming up with a solution that's going to cost a lot of money for, for residents and property tax, I presume. I'm not sure how you charge us that, but I know you'll figure that out. And, and we don't have a solution to exit people out or let them in. So, and I really enjoyed your talk, the lady's talk about the community. And I think that that was a really nice, well-done in terms of speaking to why people move here. And, and I think that with this growth, we, we've got a responsibility in the county for growth. I get that, but we might need to tap that back a little bit until we get the county to come on board with a solution of getting us off the hill. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, City Council. Eric Pedersen, 2409 209th Avenue Northeast, Samamish. Also Sahali resident and, like my wife, new to the area. Very impressed with the, the quality of the city, the leadership of both the council now and, and your predecessors. You certainly have built a wonderful community that my wife, Andrea, and I are really enjoying being a part of. That being said, it's kind of a wake-up call to, to show up to this great community and realize that there's all this potential change amidst and, and a lot of growth coming. And I guess what I'd say is I, I realize we've got to sort of absorb the growth. Hopefully, we're going to be balanced and pragmatic about it. When I think about the price tag of something you're talking about and the fact that we as the residents sound like we're going to have to really be key funders of this, I, I start thinking, wow, this is a surprise to me. You know, we, we made quite an investment, but, so, so I guess my thoughts are, I'd encourage the council, you know, maybe you've already talked with consultants about this, but I, I think there's a lot of levers or opportunities to deal with this growth without having to spend on massive infrastructure. You know, there are smart lights. There are, you know, maybe more frequent bus routings. You know, more people are using Uber and Lyft all the time as, as a social pattern. You know, and, and maybe there's even subsidies the city could provide, you know, that, that, you know, I'd feel more comfortable with my tax dollars providing subsidies for people that ride the bus, you know, more encouragement, incentives to, to ride the bus or, or to do other, you know, mitigating strategies like that. And the other thing I'd encourage you to think about is when you think about the future, we're hearing a lot of futurists talk about autonomous vehicles coming. And, you know, the thing that I, that strikes me about autonomous vehicles when I've heard the experts talk about is it's probably going to create easier, more seamless traffic flows because the cars are going to talk to each other and they're going to be able to regulate through traffic much easier. So are we building something that's really necessary? If this is the future, you know, this future is coming? Are we building something that's really going to be necessary? Are we going to have naturally more progressive flow rates through this autonomous vehicle? You know, granted, how soon it'll come, we don't know, but it seems like our future's coming very fast at us. So I just ask you to think about that as you think of the totality of this and, and the, the expense. And the other thing that I'm, I don't, I'm new enough that I don't know enough about this issue, but I feel like, okay, so one thing, it's, it's the builders that are helping build this housing, and they're going to reap the economic benefits of this, this investment. But somehow, I feel like we're maybe the ones that are being asked to, to fund that. And I don't know if that's an equitable or a fair way to consider it. So you might be closer to that, but I just ask you to consider those factors. Maybe you've already thought about that, but thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Hello. Sebira Morinca, 2241 Sahali Drive West. And this is not for press speech. It's with a hook based on here and on comments on here. From a perspective of our family, we did not like the growth in the past couple of years. I understand it's necessary for legal reasons, but I think the root of the concern here is that we already had the growth. And now the, given the current models, and I, I read the, the original of the study, it seems that the, the study came up with standards that are reasonable. There are many, there are many organizations throughout the country that use those standards. So many of the arguments that I've heard in here have been along lines of, hey, we suffered the growth for whatever reasons, and now we do not have adequate services. Let's just lower the standards for the services. The argument is not unlike that for, I can make for water over sewage. Too many people consume sewage. Well, let's lower the standards for the sewage treatment plants. I don't think it's a long-term, sustainable solution. So I understand there is a, there is a, there is a price tag on that, and we should probably stop unreasonable growth, but by whatever legal means that's available. But when it comes to maintaining the level of service and infrastructure in the city, part of the, what makes the city great is, is great parks, clean water, until fairly late, reasonable roads. Let's maintain it. But when deciding how to fund those huge investments, let's put some of the, some of the burden of, of financing those new infrastructure on the people responsible, which are builders and those that, you know, create the growth in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it over to council if there's any comments. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I think it'd be a really good idea, and I guess I'm seeking fellow council member support on this, to have, at this point, or than, not today, but based upon the public hearing and based upon the complexities of our concurrency model. It's complex to me. It's taken me a long time to get my head wrapped around it, and I've had to reread it several times, and I still got questions. So I'd like to think we can come up with a way to kind of do a little bit more public outreach than we have. What I have in mind is working with staff and maybe directing the, the city staff to, to have an open house, a presentation as to what these things look like and how will this work? And how does the concurrency process in a, in a Growth Management Act sense? How did we get here? What decisions did we make? When we implement this, it will look like this as much as we can tell. It'll do this to growth and based upon this ratio, using the, you know, volume over capacity model, it'll do something else if we add another number. Giving people that, that ability to kind of sit down and ask, not just a, a public comment question, where there's very little back and forth, but being able to sit down with maybe Victor or Kendra or some of our traffic engineers, I would have said Steve, but whomever we have in, in place is going forward. You know, our staff to be able to, to sit down with folks and kind of in a more informal way, say, what does this mean? How does this work? Because I, I don't think, it's one thing for us to hire traffic engineers and say, tell us what makes sense. And whether we listen to them or not is, that's what we're elected to do. We're trying to make the best and trying to take that testimony and, and listen to our consultants, but, you know, that's what we're elected to do, whereas, you know, citizens are kind of, it's, it's a lot of information to take on. It's, it's complicated. So I'm, I'm seeking support for directing the staff to, to schedule, maybe we have our fire stations available, a Saturday afternoon, a Sunday afternoon, a couple hours of presentation and questions and answers, and, and having us as council members there too, and, and staff, and, and just try to have it be a much more open, transparent process so that between now and May, when these things may or may not become solidified, that we can continue that, that interactive process with our constituents and our friends and our neighbors to, to try to better educate and understand and educate ourselves as to where we're at. That's my suggestion.
I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think this is a very complex topic, and listening to the public comment, it's clear that it's not understood. So I think that would be a good idea if we could do that. I mean, typically, we do these open houses, you know, at the end of the day somewhere. We certainly have City Hall open to us to use for that purpose. So I would certainly be amenable to having that as a way to educate. Mr. City Manager, you have something?
I think from my staff perspective, we are not opposed to doing something of that nature. What I would like to do is two things prior to that. Hopefully, we can all meet for what we're talking about as a brief retreat. I think that would be helpful in having a, a little better idea about the direction that council may wish to go in on some issues. And then maybe a small committee of the council. We could sit down with staff and we could kind of plan out exactly what you want to do here, so we'd make that more effective for folks and also kind of satisfy what you're looking for as well. And I would suggest that you do this sometime after April, but, but-
That's self-serving, though, Larry.
Christie, put me in the queue, please.
Yes, you got it. Councilmember Valdrama.
Yeah, I know. I support that, both of those recommendations. I would ask that any discussion that we have, as I did in my email earlier, whether it's separate or not, be taped and streamlined so the citizens can view that, so that it's open and transparent process. A few years ago, we had the same process take place when we were talking about one lane, and it stunned the people of Sahali how late they were in. At that time, they were about to approve the design without their inputs into it. And frankly, that's what's basically happened. We don't have two newspapers to cover anymore, so that's fed the problem, but there's also misinformation that's been going forward here. And there are questions that we've been repeatedly asked. I think we've heard a couple of people here, including Kevin Jones, who asked, where did the 1.1 come from? There was no professional opinion given to us, no transportation engineer. We don't understand the capacity. That's been in several emails to us from both city staff and the other. We need to explain that to the citizens as well. Where are these coming from? Why were they chosen, given the professional opinions we were given? And explain why we chose a number, knowing that Sahali was going to fail in Isicua Falls City. That's in the emails as well from the city. So I'd like to have those discussions also be put out and options. We'd still have three options to go forward as of today. And while we don't have to take action today, we have that right, given the public hearing here. And the three options are, as the citizens have mentioned, as this staff has mentioned, we can take this off the list for considerations on concurrency. We can also raise it to 1.4 or above. Or we can put $85, $100 million in and then hit 202. And that, as I had said previously, is lipstick putting on a pig, which is not fiscally prudent. It's not environmentally prudent. It's not respecting property rights. All this was said before on November 13th, if you go back and look at your information. And you're going to destroy one of our national landmarks. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, I'd like to support Councilmember Ritchie's recommendation, although I would like to say that I think it would be great if we could take some of these open houses closer to the communities. I think evenings at City Hall, we tend to find that those open houses are not as well-attended. And so I think working with some of the HOAs and being able to do some of those meetings kind of closer to where people are, I think would be a great idea. I do think there are a number of issues that are important, that as someone who's now been on the council for a year, there, there are a lot of complex issues, and, and some of our citizens touched on them, growth and, and the Growth Management Act. Our region is growing at an incredible pace. And Growth Management Act or not, there's going to be pressure to continue to, to see houses being built in our city. Right now, if no one else moved into this region, we have 144,000 housing unit shortage in King County right now. So if not a single other person came here, we still need a lot more housing units. And, and people talked about, what is our responsibility? I think that's a conversation we need to have with the community. I think we, as a council, can provide the leadership, which in my mind is direction, legislation, and budget. And direction isn't directing the staff on how to do their tasks. Direction is, how do we look forward? How do we look out and do that planning? And we can spend our time and all of our citizens' resources figuring out how we can stop growth, or we can figure out how we can plan for that. Where and how can we place growth in our city? What makes sense? How, if we are going to take more growth in certain areas, how do we plan for that transportation? People talked about it. Transit, infrastructure, what are those things? We need to be doing that long-term planning, and that, that's on us. That is, that is what true leadership is, and that is where, I believe, as a council, we haven't been necessarily fulfilling all of those obligations, and I think we can do more. And I think being able to explain some of these to the broader community so that we can get better input, so people understand what those issues are and the different things we have to balance, I think would really be helpful, because they are complicated issues. I mean, I think we've all learned a lot in going through this. So I appreciate everyone coming tonight and providing your input and recognizing that, that there are a lot of tough decisions for us to make and how can we best approach dealing with these. And there are options, but I don't think that trying to hold up that dam forever is going to work. Eventually, the pressures, again, Growth Management Act or not, the pressures are going to break through, and, and we should have a plan for what we want to do there. And I think you guys deserve that, and, and we need to hear your input in making that plan. So thanks again for coming out and spending your evening.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, thank you. So I think we're a little bit off topic, but I'm going to address the comment or the, the idea. I do too, I also like the idea of more public input and back and forth. However, I think with where we're at, I think it, it is too preliminary. When we have, typically, when we have open houses, we have a range of two, three alternatives versus a wide-open slate, and it's very, as everybody has alluded to, this is a very difficult calculation, technical understanding, and it's taken me three years to get somewhat comfortable with it. But the first two years, to figure out that what we were doing before really didn't work very well, and then to come up with a new system, it took another year. However, like I said, I think it's too preliminary to do it immediately, but at some point, I totally agree with going out and giving the public's input. But we are elected to make decisions. We are the ones that are obligated to study this, learn it, and fully understand it. And that doesn't mean that it's an easy decision, because there's so many competing interests that we have to balance. And those are the tough things that everybody, the public included, as well as us as council members, struggle with. It's not, it's not a black and white issue. So, so I'm supportive of it, but maybe later on, after we have some more discussions as council, we kind of winnow it down, so it's just not a wide-open slate. Now, back to the issue with the bill agenda. I think we had the public hearing, so we've, we've done what's on the agenda. I wanted to, first of all, make sure that all the emails that we've got here relating to this agenda item or public hearing, sorry, have been added to the record, because there were some very good inputs back and forth. Number two, there was one comment that I looked at and noticed that I tend to agree with and I would put out for us to consider, was adding in exceptions to the 14A 10 dot 30 dot one, I'm sorry, 1A, as to including ADUs to be accepted from the concurrency testing. So if we want to do that, and I guess the, my third question then, and for the city manager, what was the date that we have to approve this to become permanent?
That is, May the 1st.
May 1st. So we have some time, although we could, we could adopt it tonight to become permanent. Is that not correct?
I believe that's correct.
All right. So I just wanted to- All right. So I just wanted to confirm and kind of clarify that we actually have two issues. Number one is to whether or not we want to have the interim development regs to become permanent. We don't have to do that tonight. We can do it until May 1st, or we can do it tonight. But number two is the issue of what we do with Sahale. It's a separate and distinct issue. That's not the bill agenda that we have on our agenda tonight. It's to decide whether or not we want to adopt the, no, I'm sorry. It's whether or not, it's to have a public hearing as to the interim development regs, period. It's not about Sahale. That, I would propose, that we have a long, long study session, because it is an issue that we need to figure out. But that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. And it is not an easy decision. So finally, I want to address some comments that have been going out that I totally disagree with in public comment and as my fellow council members as well, that our 1.1 is arbitrary. If you read the Highway Capacity Manual, the volume to capacity that they recommend is a 1.0. Anything less than that, it's good. A 1.0 is their limit to say, this is what it should do. If you do anything worse than this, it's terrible. We went to 1.1, a 10% over of that. It's not arbitrary. It's from a council of experts, national experts, that deal with traffic that says it should be a 1.0. So when somebody says it's arbitrary, it's not arbitrary, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make a quick comment about the?
I just, I want to correct what I said. My understanding, I had thought that this had been through the legislative process of Planning Commission. It has not. So that still needs to take place before you can adopt this permanently.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I very much support having the open houses. I'd like to see more, I guess, rather than open houses, I'd rather see charrettes so that they're actually are more of a working sort of thing with the residents and the staff versus a show-and-tell, I guess. And I want to make sure that, I've heard so much tonight from residents from Sahale that, and I've been able to see this flyer that came out to you, there's not been anything that's been decided on Sahale. And as a matter of fact, I'm looking now at something that was sent from one of our engineers that we work with. And, you know, he's got ideas here that have nothing to do with buying any more right-of-way. So I don't like scare tactics, and I want to thank everybody for coming. But this is really preliminary. And so the idea that we're throwing numbers out there and we're saying that we're going to be taking space, it's very preliminary, and it's nothing but a scare tactic. And I would hope that by the time we get to some finalized discussions and need some public input, and we have a direction on Sahale, I would hope we would make sure Sahale has a notice from the city for you to come and please join us. We will not forget that you're out there.
So I want to first dive into concurrency, because I think somebody came up to the podium and said they don't really understand it. And it is a very, very complex topic. If you're new to the subject, this V/over-C, which is a volume-to-capacity ratio, states that a road has a certain capacity based on its geometry. The volume is simply how many cars were able to go down that particular roadway. It's a simple division. As Councilmember Hornish stated, it's an industry standard. The Highway Capacity Manual says after 1.0, it's considered kind of a failure. That doesn't mean you can't move anymore. It means that your driver experience on that road diminishes significantly. So we went over and above the industry standard at 1.1 across the city, and we gave ourselves a little bit of grace with segments and for any corridor. And that Sahale corridor that we're having an issue with has five segments on it. And there's a few that are problematic. Corridor is failing, and we have certain segments within that corridor that are failing. There's one that's almost, well, 1.4 now. And I want to be sure that everyone understands that we're dealing with three-year-old traffic numbers with these numbers that we have. These are 2016 traffic counts from April. It is nearly, I mean, we're almost three years past that. So one of those segments will fail at a 1.4, which is 75 more cars. Segment nine, 37th down to the city limits, 75 more cars will trigger a failure there for that segment. The legislative process, as our city manager stated, is an ongoing thing. It will go through the Planning Commission, and they will look at this, and it will come back for council as a permanent regulation. But I think, you know, we had someone talk to about the, you know, developers and who's paying for what and what lands on the back of the taxpayers. We often use this "growth pays for growth" adage. It's just not true. In fact, our own adopted comprehensive plan of the $237 million in capital projects that we have listed on there, 21% of it is paid with impact fees, which is what we collect from developers when they come in, which means a lot of the burden does fall on the back of taxpayers. And I want to explain, kind of, I think we're at a precipice here in Sammamish, where we decided we wanted to look at concurrency because we had a problem. The problem was is that the residents we were hearing from were saying, hey, what's with all the traffic? We keep growing, and we're not doing any projects around here infrastructure-wise. So we started to take a deep dive into concurrency. And the methodology that we had previous to what we've currently adopted allowed for vehicular capacity on your sidewalks, on your regional trail, in your bike lanes. These are all places you're not allowed to drive. And yet we gave the vehicles capacity when you're not allowed to drive there. And we said, well, that doesn't quite feel right. So we took that away, and we looked at the Highway Capacity Manual, which dictates basically what you should do if you use a volume-to-capacity ratio. But we gave ourselves a little bit more, because we went over that 1.0 ratio. So I think it was already stated before about it being arbitrary. It's really not. And we went above that, and we have a problem. And I think we're finally recognizing the problem in our city that has been there all along, that we changed with math, right? We moved numbers around on paper and said, nope, it works. See, on paper, it works. But what we were hearing from the people that were sitting in the traffic is that it wasn't working. Relative to Sahale, we haven't gotten there yet. All we know is that we have a problem. But a problem doesn't mean we have to take wide swaths of public right-of-way in order to fix the problem. There are options out there, and we have yet to investigate those. I think that's what we, as a council, want to do, and that's where the public process comes in, too. We looked at doing a project on Sahale before I was on the council. In 2015, there was a five- and a three-lane option. And we opted not to do that three-lane option because the capacity was being generated not from vehicle lanes, but from bike lanes and sidewalks, places you're not allowed to drive. And that's kind of what, I think, landed us to where we are today. So we're taking a hard look at this. I think there's a lot we can do, but that former policy, I think, got us to where we're at now. And it's hard when you look and you say, wow, we have some failures in the city. And not all of them have been addressed through our Transportation Improvement Plan, which is something we do every six, we have to look out six years, but we do it annually. We don't have funding attached for Sahale right now, which is causing us some heartache as well. But I want to be sure that there, a couple of options were floated, which was to remove it from concurrency. I think that's an unconscionable idea. And I'll tell you why. Because we've already, we're not looking at Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway on the north end, and it was stated, oh, it's still in concurrency. Yes, because we have intersection-level of service, except for there aren't any intersections up there, none. So we're basically not looking at that. And to take away your only principal arterial on your northern route out of the city is not doing your citizens a favor in terms of actually letting them get out of the city. I drive Sahale every morning, Monday through Friday, outside of what we're deeming the peak hour, which is 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. But I crawl all the way down the hill. I think somebody said it backs up to Sahale. I've run a myriad of videos of, you know, sitting in the traffic and how long it takes to get out. We have very concentrated peak-hour problems, right? One happens in the morning when everyone's trying to go to work. The other one happens in the afternoon when everyone's trying to come back. And that's where I think we can be creative and not have to take wide swaths of public right-of-way, knowing that we have very directional and time-sensitive places where we have congestion. And I think there's opportunity to engage you and traffic engineers and our staff to come up with creative solutions that, you know, we're not looking at taking your backyard, and we're not looking at taking the beautiful Sahale golf course. That's not, you know, that's not where we're at. We haven't even crossed that bridge where we're looking at doing a project there. All we know is that we have an issue. And I think we want to address it. And we want to do that in a manner that engages the public when we do that. I think we've always tried to reach out to the public and intend to do that going forward. So, you know, don't sweat that suddenly we're doing six lanes out there. I don't think that's the answer at all. You know, I'm not supportive of taking your backyards to do a project. But we're at the precipice here. Like I said, we have a lot of traffic on our roads. If we continue to grow, we're going to put more traffic down there. If you raise the V/over-C, you simply allow more cars to keep going down the same road without making improvements. And we need to figure out what we want to do. And that, in part, is your feedback. So.
All right. Councilmember Ritchie.
So, not to, I don't want to be redundant about wanting to try to get public input, but I definitely think we should get public input sooner rather than later, because I don't think that there is a lot of public awareness, lack of newspapers, blogs, things like that. There's a lot of opinions, and there's a lot of feelings. But I would like to see a chance for us to get more public input. That is important to me as, in this seat, trying to make some determinations as to where we go from here. I'll also say that, you know, I do agree that we had a concurrency model before that was lacking in a certain regard. But I don't know about you, but I'm kind of happy with where the city's at. We do have, you know, growing traffic, but so does the region. This is a regional problem. I'm from back east, and I mean, I'm from Michigan, Detroit. And you want to see empty highways, watch what happens when the auto industry goes away. You could drive 100 miles an hour down those big open freeways. It's scary to think what could happen if we don't support our Microsofts, our Amazons, and their other businesses that feed off those in our communities. We are all interconnected. We need to work with King County to resolve getting a better connection onto 202 so that Sahale can clear out faster, so that folks turning out of Timberline aren't waiting in a line of cars in front of them so they can turn. That's the issue. And I live in Kohani, the same thing, South Side. I mean, my commute coming out of Kohani is great, right until I get to the light at, you know, Isco Falls City Road and Eastlake-Sammamish. And now I'm sitting there in traffic, trying to get on the highway. Once I get on the highway, not so bad. We have traffic. But in the real world, Sammamish traffic problems are just not that bad if you drive to, say, Renton, or Seattle, or anywhere else in this community. We are, we're very lucky. Now, having said that, I don't want it to get much worse. I want to try to figure out what we can do through intelligent traffic lights and getting traffic flows going better. But those types of issues are part of our Transportation Master Plan. And we made a decision back a year ago that, as a council, we made a decision to do concurrency, to look at concurrency first, rather than building what's called a TMP, our little, we were like acronyms, right? You work at a company, it's all about acronyms. Same thing for us, the TMP, the Transportation Master Plan. What does that look like? Yes, we need sidewalks. My kids walk to school. We don't have enough sidewalks connecting our cities, our neighborhoods within our city, so the kids can walk to school. You want to take a car off the road, put sidewalks in so parents know their kids are on sidewalks. That way, they don't need to drive them to school every day. I mean, that kind of thing is something we could look at in our Transportation Master Plan, and we haven't done that yet. And that's a requirement on us as far as state obligations to fit that piece into our comprehensive plan. So I hope that we're going to continue to talk about this concurrency issue. But at the same time, I think it's really important that we look at it as part of a larger issue. Getting, you know, bus routes up here means we have to figure out where we're going to put buses. And buses in the middle of Sahale? I don't know. That sounds, what does that look like? We have the Microsoft connector. We have options that we could look at through our Transportation Master Plan that are not going to cost us potentially tens of millions of dollars. Last thing I want to say is, I don't think anybody sincerely wants to put four, five, or six lanes on Sahale. I don't want to speak for anybody. I don't want to do that. I don't think anybody sees that as a viable option. Having said that, when we adopted this concurrency model as a council, regardless of how we voted, doesn't matter, this is our council policy, we agreed to this 1.1 volume-over-capacity using this Highway Capacity Manual, right? This is what we did. It created a failure, a traffic failure, on Sahale Way. We are now obligated, as a council, as a city, to figure out how to fix that. So how do we fix that? Do we nibble around the edges? And do we lower the speed limit? Do we put in three lanes? Do we put in a bike lane and, you know, and call that multimodal transport? We have options. It's important for me to hear what constituents and citizens, fellow citizens, think. I have an opinion that's as valid as anybody else's, but I want to make sure we're hearing that before we get to April or May, because by then, opinions have solidified. People's feelings have kind of, we've kind of gotten, we bunkered down, right? So I would think we should start next week and do them all the way through the rest of the winter. It's cold and rainy outside. I want to be in a fire station, learn about concurrency. For an hour or two on a weekend, this is what we, if traffic is such a big deal, if investments in our city or tax dollars are so meaningful to us, that should inspire people to come out, come to a meeting, give their opinion, do a little bit of research, and get involved. This is what a democracy is about. So to me, we should start those conversations now. We should learn what the HCM, the Highway Capacity Manual, requires us to do based upon the failures that we, as a council, created by our choices on Sahale Way. And we can all have feelings. Some people, oh, too much traffic. There's way too much traffic. Their traffic is fine. We all have opinions. But how we measure that has real-life, real-dollar values behind it. So we need to determine how we're going to move forward. And I would hope we can build consensus through public outreach, rather than us getting up here and saying, here's what we're going to do. Good luck. That's not appropriate in my mind. That's not what we should be doing.
Councilmember Valderrama.
I just want to follow along with Councilmember Ritchie had said. When this methodology was chosen, and if you go back to the meetings of October 16th or 22nd, staff specifically had told us, this is a blunt instrument you're choosing with the Highway Capacity Manual. You're being forced to put more asphalt down as the only solution, whether that's the appropriate way and has any bearing. In this case, obviously, as we've heard, 202 is down there. You have better ways and options, and that's one of them, where staff recommendation was raise it to one, their recommendation was 1.5, be able to then start to understand capacity, because we don't understand capacity. And the numbers were picked arbitrary. And I thank Kevin Jones for that word, because other people have used a much more-
Point of order, point of order.
Okay, state your point.
We are revisiting, we are revisiting past actions of the council, which is prohibited. We don't need to discuss the discussions we've had in the past.
Your point is well-taken. Yes, that is Robert's rules. It's Robert's rules.
What's Robert's rules?
You can't revisit past actions of the council.
I'm not revisiting the action. I'm thanking them for the term arbitrary versus saying where we pulled that out from, as others have said. So as far as the surprise that people say, I guess it's pretty disingenuous to me that people are saying, we don't know where Sahale's coming out from. On November 13th, we were specifically told by that transportation engineer and-
Again, we're revisiting-
You pick everything other than 1.25, that will fail.
We don't need to be revisiting. I don't know why we're revisiting.
The comment was made on Sahale, where does it come from?
We are revisiting. Councilmember Valderrama.
I'm responding to the comments of Karen Moran here.
But you cannot revisit-
I'm not revisiting the decision.
You are when you're talking about past-
No, let me just tell you that, we were told on December 13th, the model without major improvement, four to six lanes, still fails in 2024.
You are way out of order, Councilmember Valderrama.
But you have not have a vote on if I'm-
We don't have to. Somebody has to ask for a vote. The point of order was called.
A point of order, you're going to ask for a vote. Is there a second?
Appeal.
There you go. That's how you do it.
Okay.
Now we have to vote.
All right.
Whether you can continue to talk about this.
About that issue.
About past actions the council has taken.
That's correct, of past actions.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor of allowing Councilmember Valderrama to continue talking about past actions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So 4-3?
4-3.
Thank you very much. So when you continue to pretend that it didn't exist, that they haven't mentioned four to six lanes on that, I think it's disingenuous to the people here, and they're pretending that this hasn't been discussed. There are a number of significant actions that need to be taken and options to be looked at on that. They can look online to see them, but we have to stop trying to say, I don't know why you're here and why this discussion's coming up, when we've received messages that say, this is the approach that was taken, this is what the consequences are. And we've been told that under the current model 2024, four to six lanes may not be enough. So that is not to say that it's appropriate. What we may have to look at, and we should see, is from staff, what was originally done, if we take a higher V/over-C of 1.5, let's look at pointed solutions that can work. I also find it difficult to say it's unconscionable to say that we're going to take or not consider it. The entire city of Bellevue has been allowed to have- going to take or not consider road. The entire city of Bellevue has been allowed to have a level F of failure for it. Seattle does the same, many others, to modify to avoid these kind of problems. I also find it unconscionable, from my perspective, that you would want to put even as a consideration, a possible discussion on 85 to 100 million, knowing it would not solve an issue, which is one of the options under this blunt instrument that's taking place, as well as the other consequences. So, we do have several options that we can discuss. We're going to deliberate them. But the main issue and main focus since November has been Sahale. I haven't heard any other road mentioned. The original two were Issaquapine Lake Road and Sahale in November. But since then, the communication that I have in front of me, and I'm glad to read them one at a time, has all been Sahale. So.
Councilmember Ross.
I don't think I have the time and energy to-
Oh, yes, you do.
Rebut my friend on the left. But I do want to make something very clear. It's been repeated over and over again that it was recommended that 1.4 was the ratio. And if we rewind tapes, we'll clearly see Councilmember Ritchie asked both Kendra, our consultant, and Victor, a traffic engineer, the same question. What option, what ratio do you recommend? And the answer from both of them was 1.1. So, we didn't make this up. We did not, we relied on expert advice to reach a final conclusion. That's really important to state. And it is highly, it's documented process in the Highway Capacity Model. Not only that, but we added features, made it a hybrid to make it even more permissive. Not only the 10%, but 0.1, but we added additional features of turn lanes, flashing yellows, and so on. So, it's not distort where the journey we have been on. And the other thing I keep hearing is that this new policy created the failure. No, it didn't create the failure. It identified the failure. That's the key. And so, let's just work for it. I like what Councilmember Ritchie is advocating. Let's, and I think what he's advocating is give us an opportunity to give transparent facts to the public and have that discussion centered around facts and not made-up facts or misrepresentations or bad memories. So, that's my recommendation.
Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, I may be able to save you some time this evening.
Yes, please.
Because once again, I think we're getting back into a debate that you don't need to have this evening, because you do not have a course of action before you. I think we all know the issues that we've, we face with our concurrency model, and we know the failures on our road system. And as I've mentioned to you, at some point, we need to have a discussion on how we address that. And it comes down to a combination of issues, probably. We can solve that with a policy decision. We can solve it with a construction decision. We can solve it with a combination of those two, which is probably more likely as we seek creative solutions. You can remove Sahale from, from your concurrency model. That is an option as well. You can stay the course, and there's ramifications for doing that. But we're going to have to talk through those issues and come up with a solution. That is not on the table tonight, and it really is not for the debate. And this debate, frankly, as I listen to it, and I'm sure it's for these folks, is very confusing. So, if we do not put that together in a way that we can, we can have that and folks can understand, we're just making this problem worse this evening. So, I would suggest you've received your public testimony in regards to your public hearing. I would say that we move on. You also have an issue, very difficult issue, on the housing strategy. Maybe time to move that issue. And then let's put together how we have this community conversation and decide on whatever course of action we wish to take from this point forward. Hopefully, we can do that.
Thank you. I still have several lights on, but I think we may want to direct the City Manager to have us have a study session on this topic, so that we can get further into the weeds on it, since this is not, you know, something that we have to take action on right now. We don't have anything before us. So-
But we could take action if we wanted to.
No, it has to go through the legislative process.
No, yeah, it's-
Yeah, I misspoke. It hasn't been to the Planning Commission, and I thought it had.
I think I've heard everyone up at the dais say that they would like to have this public education that Councilmember Ritchie suggested. So, I think that's something that staff can, can work on. If you need a formal motion to that end, we're happy to do that. Otherwise, I think you heard us all loud and clear.
We'll be working on that with you and also be kind of integrating a process that involve your retreat as well.
Perfect. Okay. Okay. So, we still have a couple lights on. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I do think we need to engage the public early and often. I think that waiting till the end, I think Mary Victor has addressed the council on several occasions, letting us know that when we wait until the end to get input, it's, it's often too late. And so, I think it is important that we do these education sessions earlier and more frequently, so that we can get input from the public in time to influence our decisions. So, I want to put that out there. In that regard, I would encourage those who are interested to attend the public, or to attend the Planning Commission meetings when they, when they bring this up. I think that that is a great forum to, to come and participate. We have a Planning Commissioner here in the audience, and he's nodding his head. I didn't know if he would run in fear when I suggested everyone attend. But the Planning Commission meetings are great. They're actually probably better than the council meetings, probably more productive.
A lot of entertaining.
And, and so, I really do suggest you go and provide input and listen to those discussions, because I think that would be very productive. I do want to just address a couple of things. One, I think that there are a whole host of things we can work on. Mayor, I want to say that I agree when you said, you know, people want to go to work and come home from work as quickly as possible, and as easily as possible, and as efficiently as possible. And in that regard, there are a lot of things that we can look at, and that is why we do need to complete our transportation master plan, to look at things like transit options and, and all of the different things. People brought up issues that I think are great, that we've kind of talked about, but maybe we sometimes forget, which is why public input is so key, where people said, we need to be working with the county. We, you know, people said, we'd rather subsidize transit than put down more pavement. So, I think it is important that we hear these comments and we take those to heart. And I think that is important. I think the county and the city of Redmond, you know, we haven't even talked about the fact that light rail is coming to Marymore in 2024. How do we, how do we incorporate that into improving our, our transportation issues and our traffic problems without necessarily having to pave over paradise? So, I think that there are options, but we do need to go through that, that planning process. And, and on, and just really quickly, it is very complicated concurrency, and I do want to make sure that people are clear. I don't, I don't believe that 1.1 was an arbitrary decision. I think that it is a complicated decision. And my personal challenge with the current V over C we have is that, and this was brought up, is how we calculate that capacity. So, I don't think it's totally accurate to say that we gave capacity for people to drive on the sidewalks. That isn't exactly how it works. When you have sidewalks, and when you have bike lanes, and when you have trails, what that does is that that allows your traffic to flow more freely, right? People will go faster. People, if, if pedestrians aren't crossing the road, you have less interruptions. So, was our previous concurrency model overstating some of that? Probably. But it's not that we said people could drive on the sidewalks, and that's why we gave it more capacity. But I do think that how we calculate the capacity needs to be looked at very closely, because it is true that the volumes that we're measuring on these roads are 1.5, in some cases, one and a half times what we said that the calculated capacity of the roadway is. And so, maybe we need to look at how we calculate the capacity. And then the other thing to keep in mind is that when we talk about what that V over C ratio is, we're only talking about the peak hour. We're only talking about at rush hour. And so, one of the real questions that I think, again, we need public input on, and that's why I bring it up here, is what is the public willing to take in terms of, as the mayor likes to call it, driver experience during rush hour? We're not talking about, we're not talking about, you know, having roadways that are jam-packed 24 hours a day. That would be horrible. But during the rush hour of going to work in the morning, what is an acceptable degradation in service? I don't think any of us expect that you're going to be able to drive at speed from here to Microsoft in the morning, during the morning rush hour. But what is that acceptable level of degradation that is appropriate in terms of balancing how much time we have to spend on the roads, what the environmental impacts are, versus the cost of trying to reduce that by some amount of time? And I think those are the real decisions that we need to look at and make, and we need to stop bickering over, you know, what was done before and whose fault is it? And we really need to take a step back and look at these things very pragmatically. They aren't simple solutions. There is no magic bullet. There's, there's no way we're going to, at this moment in time, we can't teleport to work. But there are a lot of options, and we really do need your input to know, what are you willing to do? If we can get 15% of our citizens to start taking transit, that solves most of our problems right there. Is that something people are willing to do? And it, and what would it take in transit to get you out of your car and onto a bus and, or onto the light rail? That's the input that we really need. And so, that's what I would ask you guys to provide, and get your friends and your neighbors to provide it to us as well. If you can't attend a meeting, send us an email. That's the input we really need, because those are, to me, the right balanced decisions that we should be making. So, thanks.
So, Council, we've had a lot of people already go two rounds. I, I don't want to go through three rounds on this. So, I know, Deputy Mayor Moran.
I have to say, I'm not nearly as good as at talking, in some cases pontificating, as some others. So, I'm going to be very short and very brief. This is a really hard topic. It's a really confusing topic, and it requires a lot of input. And that, along with, we've got another one coming up, the housing strategy, which I'd like to throw right in there and have input on. So, I want to thank everybody for coming. We, we hear you. We know it's difficult. I can tell you, I personally and others have had conversations regarding 202, so we haven't forgotten that either. So, anyway, thank you very much for coming. And I'd like to propose you take a five-minute break.
Second.
Councilmember Ritchie, I recognize you have your light on, but you've spoken twice. And so, okay.
Just me asking for five minutes. That's a third on that.
Excellent. I like the way you think. Okay, yes. So, I think we will take a short break here prior to diving into the rest of our agenda. So. Okay, so that was a very long five minutes. All right. So, we're going to jump back into it. This is a resolution related to the adoption of the Smamish Homegrown and incorporation by reference into the Smamish Comprehensive Plan. Mr. City Manager.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Thomas and let him talk to you about this issue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, council. Little did you know, the fun part of your evening is about to begin. So, we'll get right to it. Before we get started, introductions. Obviously, I'm Jeff Thomas, and this is Miriam Leitner, both with Community Development. The agenda bill is currently flashed up on your screen there. What I'd like to do, before we get into anything of substance, is just to make sure we're all on the same page with what is and is not in your packet related to this matter. So, we've got the agenda bill, the first page of it, which is on the screen there. We'll talk about that a little bit more here in a few minutes. The exhibits are showing on the screen there. So, Exhibit 1 in your, your packet to this agenda bill is a draft resolution with a current redlined version of Smamish Homegrown. Exhibit 2, what we did was, we actually pulled out Section 7 of the actual document in Exhibit 1. In the event that you want to have any sort of a working session on this, we'd be mostly focused on that. Exhibit 3 is the council Q and A received through December 14th, 2018. And Exhibit 4 is just a catalog of sorts of amendments that had been made since the Planning Commission finished their work back in July. So, with that, now that we all know what we're working with and have in front of us, we'll get into this here a little bit. So, you'll recall, December 3rd was the last time the city council touched Smamish Homegrown, the housing strategy update. And at that meeting on December 3rd, it was agreed that any questions that the city council had, please send them to staff with a deadline that was set of December 14th, so that we'd be able to turn those questions around to bring back to you in January. So, that's what you've got in Exhibit 3. So, the questions, and then, of course, staff responses. The, what's changed since we met last about this on December 3rd is, after some careful consideration and combing back through the series of meetings that the city council had related to this subject, going all the way back to the week of Labor Day, I believe, last year, it became clear that the Appendix H that was in the Planning Commission's recommendation to you was too robust, perhaps, a little too complicated, and had a little too much information in it. So, Section 7 of the actual Housing Strategy Update, which again is now pulled out in Exhibit 2 as a separate item, we went back, staff, and prepared some substantial revisions to it. In fact, I think we struck the whole thing and just rewrote it for you, the city council, for, for tonight. It's streamlined. Hopefully, it's more simple and easy to understand. And we've also tried to give some special attention to the language in that Section 7 to make it hopefully a little bit more palatable for the city council, with an understanding that we're not trying to run out and do all these things immediately. This is things that we would consider doing between zero and five years from the point of approval, if that happens with city council. So, can you scroll down the agenda bill? We're going to go down the agenda bill here a little bit to get to some options that staff provided you in your materials. There's three options that we have assembled for you here this evening. Option 1 would be to consider approving the resolution in Exhibit 1 with Smamish Homegrown as amended in your packet materials. So, again, that's primarily that Section 7, and then the complete striking of Appendix H. Option 2, which we're going to talk a little bit more about here in a moment, would be essentially doing the same thing, but with any further amendments that the city council considers here this evening. So, it would be the materials in Exhibit 1, plus anything else you talk about here this evening changing. And then, Option 3 kind of gets back to what we talked about on December 3rd, and that's if, 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 for whatever reason, whatever your reason may be, you're, you want to focus on other things, it's time to move on to new things, whatever it may be, we would ask for some closure, respectfully, on this matter, being that we've, it's been on our work program here at the staff level, and we've, we've been meeting intermittently since the week of Labor Day, to consider the resolution, vote to not approve it, with the idea that we could bring this back for a future annual work program, whether that's in 2020 or 2021, as we've got a chock-full stack of, of other things to do here in 2019, that we've got penciled out a number of things that need to get done in 2019, and have your legislative consideration put to them, so that we can at least bring some closure to this and move on to some other things. So, that would be Option 3. So, the last thing I'll mention, before I turn it over to the mayor, speaking of the mayor, coincidentally, she provided some additional, I guess, considerations that she sent to, I believe, the full council, as well as the interim city manager and myself, earlier today. Staff has had a chance to go through those and provide some responses. If you're inclined to talk about Option 2 up there on the list here tonight, once I get done talking in a moment, we're prepared to actually go through those, item by item. There's 10 of them. And I believe there would be eight staff-recommended additional amendments to what's in your packet. So, again, that would be the Option 2, approve the resolution with Exhibit 1, as contained in Exhibit 1, with some additional amendments, the eight that the mayor generated earlier today. So, with that, Mayor, I'm happy to turn the mic back over to you, and we'll see where the conversation goes, I guess.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I'd like to have the walkthrough option, too, for items to walk through. Can you go with it all?
Could I ask a quick question before we go into, not to be out of order, but I just had a quick question?
Sure.
So, there's a comment made about Appendix H possibly being too robust. I just, I guess one of my questions is, if I recall, when Arthur was here from Arch, I think Councilmember Ross, you asked about what, what would it be like if we had the housing strategy without Appendix H? And I, I thought his comment was-
And I thought his comment was, the housing strategy without Appendix H isn't much of a housing strategy. Do I remember that correctly?
You do. I remember something along those same general lines. I think the difference in this case is that we've went and rebuilt Section 7.
Okay, so you incorporated some of that, just not all of that, because I was having trouble kind of comparing what was in Section 7 before to what it is now. So, okay. Okay, that, okay. I'll let you go through that. Thank you.
So...
Actually, before we go, Kristi, real quick, was that a motion to go to Option 2? I mean, if Option 3 is the one we're gonna do, I don't want to waste time going to Option 2.
No, we wanted to hear the walkthrough of what Option 2 would look like.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood what was being discussed. Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So Mayor, what we've done here is we've taken your Word document that we received, and we've obviously transferred your items. We've lettered them A through J. There's 10 of them. So we'll just go through these one by one, but I do believe they appear in the order that you presented them to us earlier today via email. So Item A was a question about a graph that's in Appendix C with the population and land area estimates for the city of Smamish. The graph, it was kind of hard to look at in fine print, but the green bars represent population, and the purple line represents land area, so...
I can see that now.
Yeah, so the population in 2015 there, we believe, is pretty well correct, right around the 50,000 mark. They're all gonna be that easy, trust me. So Item B, Item B was in relation to commonalities and maybe some unique differences that Smamish has versus the other members of the East Side and Arch. So I think the mayor was on point, recognizing that we certainly have some commonalities, but we have also some unique differences as well. So the staff response there in purple on that slide, this is the first of eight recommended changes, if you're so inclined, would be to, at the end of the paragraph that the mayor cites, we would add some language to the effect of, "Smamish also has some unique characteristics that sets it apart from other cities. Examples include the lack, excuse me, of direct access to a state highway, significantly underdeveloped mass transit, and a landscape unique with critical area challenges."
I'm certainly amenable to that change.
Okay. I told you it was gonna be easy. Item C, pressing my lock here.
Hold on, hang on, Jeff.
Oh yeah, sure.
So, it's not like we're adopting the whole plan. I think, I don't know, Jeff, you may have a suggestion on how to best go about this, because, you know, we can approve these one by one, or we can just approve the whole document. I'm not sure what you feel is the best strategy here. I mean, just because I approve it doesn't, you know, doesn't mean that the six other folks up here that...
So for the benefit of the other six members of council, I think, at least going through and briefing, finishing this short briefing, and then we can certainly...
Double back and...
Yeah, double back and talk about those a little bit, so... How many are there? Well, there's 10 total, but they're gonna go pretty quick, though. They're all pretty straightforward, so. So this is the third of 10, Item C. This gets to some language surrounding subarea plans that was in the Planning Commission Sorry, I'm just catching up here, trying to scroll through this. So this gets to doing subarea plans, and what we're recommending here is that we would just strike the language that's in this bullet on Page 6. Consideration should be given to doing plans for other neighborhoods as well. The difference was that, I think the mayor was pointing out, we have a subarea plan for Town Center. There's some talk about doing subarea plans in the future, considering doing subarea plans for the three commercial areas of the city, but then no other additional subarea plans beyond that, if I understood that language correctly.
Yeah, well, it says, "The city has considered subarea plans for its centers," and then in parentheses, it gives three. Well, we haven't talked about any of those three listed there, aside from Town Center. And that was my question, is when did we consider subarea plans for Quahani? We annexed them January 2016. I've been on the council since then, and I know we haven't talked about a subarea plan for Quahani.
We have, staff has, through research on other items, staff has stumbled across expressions of council, of past councils, that doing subarea planning for, at the time, what was the two other commercial areas of the city, could be considered. So I think, I think that was trying to, there might have been some of that rolling into the language.
As a point, I do recall, before I was on council, I attended a council meetings where they were even talking about creating a new center, shopping center down in Quahani.
Okay, well, that's what I said. I said, "We have and when," because I just, we haven't done anything as far as I'm aware. Yeah, so, and then the second part of that was striking that last sentence in there.
Yep. Okay, so Item D, Item D relates to the Town Center specifically, and whether we would want to make any reference to the Town Center density changing at some point in the future in the housing strategy. So the staff response to this, this isn't actually an amendment. This is just a kind of a short narrative response. Subarea plans can certainly change over time. They do get revisited periodically. That's a normal planning practice. In this case, for, again, for whatever reason, we, the city, can certainly choose to lock in the current density in the Town Center for the foreseeable future, and then we would strike the bullet that the mayor's referencing in this on Page 6 in its entirety.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that for just a second? Sorry, I mean, this is, I know the mayor sent an email at 5:51, but I did not have a chance to read that, so if we could just go a little slower, please.
Yeah, sure. So again, maybe I'll just briefly repeat this in a slightly different way. So, Item D relates to density in the Town Center, about the possibility of changing that density in the Town Center. So what we're looking at here, so we can strike that bullet completely and make no reference to density in the Town Center, which is fine. I think, trying to read the lines between the Planning Commission's language that moved forward, is that subarea plans do periodically get reviewed in other places outside of Smamish. That can certainly lead to a variety of changes, whether they're qualitative changes or quantitative changes. So that's the note I'm making there in the first part of the staff response. However, we can certainly move forward with the mindset that the density is the density in the Town Center, and that's the way it's gonna be for, from now until some undetermined point in time in the future.
So, let me, if I could put a few bookends on where this, my head was at on this, is that we, in other parts of the plan before us, and what we've heard, is that there could be a reason to look at the Town Center as one of, you know, the only subarea plan we have currently. It may be one of others that we have in the future, but as the one that we have now, if we're gonna look at adding density, we're looking at altering what it looks like, because the boundaries are set, which means you're looking at, instead of 5 over 1, we're likely to go higher. And based on what I've heard from their community, they don't want to go higher. And so that's why I talk about re-engaging the public for feedback before I'd consider altering that, because that changes the look. And we've already started on the Town Center, so you have projects already constructed with that 5 over 1 in mind, and so suddenly, if you're looking at 7 over 1 or 10 over 1, is that all gonna look congruent together, or is it gonna look like a hodgepodge? And that's, that was kind of where my mind was at. So that's, I just want to explain kind of what I was thinking there. Councilmember Stewart.
Could we actually see where in the plan, and the only reason I ask is I just don't recall, in reading through the plan, feeling like there was any implication that we were considering changing the density. I thought that it was referencing, if density changes were to be made, we should put criteria around it, or maybe I'm thinking of a different section. So could you take us to the section of the document where this is?
It's Page 6, and that's 6 of the actual document. So it's, if you're in your iPad, it's Page 20 of 95. It's the very last bullet, and it says, I can't read exactly because my little thing's right over. It says something, "Focus on subarea plans will allow the city to continually assess its approach to growth with a particular emphasis on Town Center and the density allowed by the current zoning, as well as housing balance and densities outside of the Town Center." So I was just specific to the Town Center in my comment here, which is, if we're looking at increasing the density there, you're...
It didn't say that. It doesn't say increasing the density.
It says, "With a particular emphasis on the density allowed by current zoning." I'm not sure what it's talking about, if you're not talking. There's other places in this document that it talks about density. So that's, that's where my head was at. If I have misread it, then maybe staff can...
Yeah, so these, these last couple items here have been in the part of the document that is the run-up, I guess, to Section 7, which is the table with the actual strategies. They, this Section 6 was intended to provide some context, I think, to the readers and to our legislative bodies of themes that were raised, and certainly with the Planning Commission, and in part with the council here through the fall, that have been discussed in some form or fashion along the way. So, the, the language, I totally understand what the mayor is getting at here, and it does say, "Particular emphasis on Town Center." So, and as you wrap your head around findings on this to lead to possible some sort of action, if the council's inclined to not have that language in there with the emphasis on the Town Center, that's, again, that's something, that's an amendment that we can make, and the recommendation was to just strike the bullet in its entirety, so.
Councilmember Stewart, are you done? No, sorry, yep. Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, my understanding, from both watching the Planning Commission, what Arthur said was that they specifically, the Planning Commission was not recommending increases in density, that that was not part of their mandate, but it is a housing strategy, and looking at considerations that we can look at. So it's not saying, "Do that." It's saying, "Hey, as you consider and develop the strategies and start to analyze it," but they were pretty explicit, and Arthur went to great lengths to say that we are not making it, this isn't the forum for talking about densities. It's what I recall quite clearly on several occasions that they had said. So I had interpreted this differently as to considerations of what's going on. Ironically, this council has put on the docket for review, looking at upzoning E to A zone, and that's gonna bring into account what the density is in the Town Center. And when that discussion takes place, we will have considerations that have to be made, and hopefully this will be some of the guides of issues to think about, whether it's only Town Center, or as others, and myself actually, are Town Center and the commercial centers that we currently have. I'd like to see when that discussion takes place, but it's not taking place today on this.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I thought this was a strategy document, and the Section 7 is the actual, the adjusted Appendix H, the implementation aspect, so...
That's correct.
I mean, I don't think we should be making a mountain out of a molehill here about a certain section that's kind of lead up and a little bit of discussion, and there's some ambiguity. I think intentionally, I think there's intentional ambiguity here, so that we can kind of, you know, figure out how these things fit together. I think we should, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to go all the way, you know, A through J, let's go through all these issues, but I don't know that, I don't know that this makes that big a difference as far as what the actual implementation strategy that is now Section 7 is actually gonna look like. That's my read. So I'd, I would rather we didn't spend a whole lot of time, you know, perseverating on whether or not we're gonna talk about upzoning the Town Center, when no one's talking about that right now. I don't see that it says that, but we can, I don't want to exclude it, and I don't want to include it. I just think this is, they're kind of forming a discussion here. They're kind of providing, a bunch of this is background material. It's really well-written. It's very well-done. There's a lot of research gotten into it, so I don't want to, you know, cut things away that are just providing background. That's, that's my two cents. I'd rather, let's figure out what's actually in the implementation, Section 7, and see if that makes sense for us, and maybe do a motion on it or not.
Okay, well, we've got six more items to go through here. Mayor, with your permission, I'll...
Actually, I still have lights on. I have a promo, oh, sorry. Because I have, Deputy Mayor Moran.
My only comment on this was, one, I totally agree that it, using Town Center in there, it makes it look like it's the only place that's gonna take any, any density or any look at a place to put any upzoning. And I agree with the mayor that if we're gonna start doing upzoning in Town Center at any point in time in the future, we would need to go back out to our residents. So how about if we use the word, you know, "any subarea?" So if, yeah, so it said, "If we are to consider additional density for any subarea."
But that includes the Town Center?
It would include the Town Center, but it would include any area, meaning any of those areas listed. I mean, I'm just trying to keep, I guess, the, take away the, the one place where it says, you know, because it makes it look like everything's just gonna go to Town Center, and I think that's where the problem is.
Councilmember Stewart.
I think, so it's the bullet that says, "A focus on subarea plans will allow the city, blah, blah, blah." That's the bullet we're talking about? What if we just said, "Subarea plans should be reevaluated on a regular basis to synchronize with the eight-year periodic comprehensive plan update," and the rest of that? And what if we just cut out that first part?
I would probably be okay with that.
Okay.
I think that gets the gist of it, which I think what staff was getting at is that it, that councils, going forward, will have to, on a periodic basis, continue to reevaluate these things. So would that, would that work?
So the full text, Deputy Mayor, is not on there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would certainly work from a staff perspective, so...
Right. So maybe that's a...
Amenable to that. A good compromise. Awesome, thank you.
Good job.
Okay.
Okay, before anyone else can say anything, Item E. So Item E talks about clustering, and again, we're still kind of in the run-up here to the actual strategy section, but, so we, we took another look at this, and we think there's probably two options. I actually really, I actually really kind of agree with the mayor, with her comment on this one. So what staff would recommend, you pick one of two on this one. Either just strike the bullet in its entirety, or remove the protecting environmentally sensitive areas language, because the mayor's correct, we already have robust regulations to do that. And what we would want to do, an opportunity, would be to, to replace with increasing and connecting open space opportunities, if we were to pursue some sort of clustering code in the future that you would look at.
I would opt to strike, because connecting open space opportunities doesn't, I'm not sure how that's playing in specifically to the housing strategy.
Well, except that, except that developing housing through clustering provisions outside of the R1 zone, so you're talking about a different housing pattern to produce this other result, so, but again, two options, as far as we're concerned, they're both good options, so...
So it would read, if we did not strike it, strike... I need to read it in here.
Page...
That's Page 8.
So it would read, "The concept of clustering residential development as a means of increasing and connecting open space opportunities could provide innovative opportunities for housing variety while respecting the environment."
Okay, all right. So I was missing the back end. That's, okay, that connects it for me. Okay. I'd be amenable to either one of those.
All righty. Item F. Okay, so Item F, I think we're just supplementing here a little bit with some additional language related to transit and transit facilities, and I'm actually gonna pull this up here on my screen and read it to you, what it would sound like. Fourth bullet down, 1, 2, 3, 4. So currently, what we have here, the fourth bullet on Page 9, is, "Affordable housing and economic diversity should be increased and dispersed through the city with affordable housing integrated into the community as whole as much as possible." To the mayor's point, we would reference transit and transit facilities, so we would just amend that to read from the top, "Within the immediate vicinity of current and future transit and/or transit facilities, affordable housing and economic diversity..." dot, 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 to finish it out. Okay.
I'm sorry, I...
Oh yeah.
Sorry, Councilmember Stewart.
So you're saying, so if I understand affordable housing, affordable housing means 80% of AMI. So you're saying that people who make 80% of the average mean income, or the median income, can only live within the immediate vicinity of current or future transit facilities?
No, I asked the question, does it make more sense to caveat it? Because it says, "Affordable housing and economic diversity should be increased and dispersed throughout the city with affordable housing integrated into the community." It was a question, it wasn't stating that needed to be changed.
Okay, I'm not comfortable with the staff response here, because, again, we're not talking about low-income housing, we're talking about affordable housing. So in Smamish, we're talking about people who make in the low six figures, and I don't know that people who make in the low six figures need to be relegated only within the immediate facility of current or future transit.
That's fair. That's fair. I just, it was a question.
I concur with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Item G, there was a question, so now we're actually in Section 7. There was a question about, aren't we already doing the subdivision code updates? It was listed as a strategy, as item A2, I believe, in the table. Staff response is essentially, yes. The project will occur in multiple phases. I believe, due to the side, the enormity of the effort that's going to occur here over multiple phases in time, the Planning Commission felt it was important to include it as a strategy, being that it's probably going to be hanging around for one to two years.
Fair enough.
If we roll through it. Okay. And then, still in the table, so there was Strategy B3, and I'm just going to scroll down to it here. Take a moment.
So, this is still relative to the sub areas?
Yeah. And so, in going back and reflecting on that there after we received it, it really should be in the section above. So, I think the idea was, we wouldn't delete it, but we would remove it from Section B, which is Housing Supply and Variety, and move it up to Section A, which is Neighborhood Vitality and Character. So, the actual strategy reads, "evaluate existing mixed-use design standards and development regulations for Town Center and consider," excuse me, "creating them for the Inglewood, Pine Lake, and Klauney Centers."
I think that it fits better up there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Two more. Still in the table, Strategy C1. Mayor, you had removed the words "current" and from the top item. I'm just going to see if I can find that here again. So, the strategy currently reads, "Consider requiring affordable housing and creating incentives like a bonus pool for affordable housing in current and future mixed-use sub areas." And I think your idea by removing the words "current" and, it would be pertaining to future mixed-use sub areas.
Because we already have a bonus pool.
Yep.
Yep.
And we're agreeable to that.
Okay.
Because we already have a bonus pool. That's correct. Okay. So, you made it through. Item 10 or J. And this is not an amendment, this is actually something the mayor pointed out, a tool that exists for a strategy, I believe it's C2. The strategy was, "Consider conducting a public land survey to inventory surplus and underutilized public lands and determine their suitability for housing and other public uses." The mayor pointed out, there's a tool that does exist out there. We did take a super quick look at it before the meeting here this evening. We agree, it's a tool that we should take a closer look at. And, Mayor, I also believe you wanted the council priority on this one to move from medium to high.
No, I think, no, it just said it was a high priority, or maybe it's, what did I write up here?
The Planning Commission had it identified as a high priority.
Okay.
In the table.
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't meaning to mess with if it was high or medium.
Cable, okay.
My point was, is that the tool exists.
Okay. Yep.
And for council that's interested in learning about it, if you just Google that home and hope, it's a really cool tool, has a lot of different options, you can plug in and see stuff, and you could think Association of Washington Cities, because I learned about it from them.
Sure.
Can we go back to the previous one for a second? Sorry.
Sure.
So, on that one, would we not consider additional incentives? So, I realize that we have a bonus pool now, but I thought, sorry, now I've lost my place. Page 16.
So, the Town Center Plan, the Town Center Sub Area currently has an affordable housing bonus pool. I believe, off the top of my head, it was 344 units.
But you just say, "Like a bonus pool," there could be other incentives that we could consider for the current, not just the bonus pool.
But I think if you're, well, true, but I think the question becomes, and I think where my thought was, is that we have a set number of dwelling units we have for the Town Center, and if you are creating, I'm not saying it's a bad thing to create something for affordable housing, but it gave the flavor that we were talking about adding more dwelling units, and that's, I think, when it said "in current," that's where I took issue with it.
Could we change the wording, then, to leave "current"? Because I think that creating additional incentives for affordable housing doesn't, by default, mean adding units, it just means making more of them affordable. And having more incentives to make more of the dwelling units that are being built affordable in the current plan is not necessarily a bad thing. So, I don't know that we want to strike the word "current." I think we just want to make sure that it does not imply that we're trying to add more units.
So, I think we'd have, I'd look to staff, because it talks about sub areas specifically. So, it's talking about the Town Center and any other sub areas that we have.
So, in the Town Center, I think that encouraging units being built there to be affordable is a good thing.
Absolutely. I agree.
So, I don't want to remove the word "current," because then we're saying that we're not going to encourage more of the units being built in the Town Center to be affordable. So, I understand your concern, that you don't want to say that we're going to add more units to the Town Center, that's fair, but there may be other incentives that we could provide for the existing units planning to be built in Town Center to be affordable.
So, can staff maybe suggest language that encompasses that idea? I do not disagree with Councilmember Stewart, that encouraging affordable units to be constructed there, I think, is a good thing. Again, my concern was in numbers of units, that that would not be ticking upward.
Because there are other tax incentives we could give that wouldn't add units, but would just encourage the ones being built to be affordable.
Don't we already have a number of additional incentives built in for the Town Center?
We have a bonus pool. That's what we are.
And that's where I think you're saying is, we could be utilizing those incentives currently.
No, I'm saying there could be other incentives, there could be other tax incentives for a unit already being planned to be built, to be built and sold as an affordable unit, a more affordable unit. So, I don't want to remove the option of making units that are planned to have incentives to make them affordable. We need workforce housing, we need housing for our firemen, and our police officers, and our teachers, and so, encouraging the units being built there to be affordable is a good thing.
Yeah. I would support that.
So, is there just some quick language that we can insert in there that?
My hamster wheel is turning.
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
So, it seems to me, what I'm hearing is that we would want to...
What if you just took out "like a bonus pool"? If you took that out?
That was, that was my first option that appeared in my mind.
Right. So, "Consider requiring affordable housing and creating incentives for affordable housing in current and future mixed-use sub areas."
That's fair, because I think bonus pool insinuates more units.
Just take out the bonus pool, and I think we're all good.
Yep, that works.
Okay. So, that concludes the review of the 10 items and eight amendments, two of which have been altered slightly here in this conversation. So, this would fit into Option 2 in your agenda bill. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and we're happy to answer anything else, but I think the discussion's with the council at this point.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I feel about as strongly about this as I do about the last conversation we had, is that this is something that I would like to see go out to the public and have input on in the neighborhood meetings, and because there's a lot of information out there that is, you know, some accurate, some inaccurate, and I think it would, it would do us a great service to utilize those meetings that we're talking about for information for transportation to also help us get information on what our citizens think about homegrown.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Option 2 as amended. Period.
Second.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Ritchie, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah. I definitely, you know, Councilmember Moran, I were just talking about, I definitely think it could be something that would require, or would, maybe not require, it may benefit from some additional public discussion. I can tell you that, different than our concurrency model, the folks on the Planning Commission really went out of their way to make this a public action. They, the inputs that came into this were not anecdotal, you know? We weren't out there taking videos by ourselves on the side of the road, right? We were, this was, they actually had charrettes and pop-ups and all kinds, and I was, that was one of the more impressive things in our joint meeting that we heard about, that they really went out of their way to build this based upon public comment, so, or public input, I should say. So, to me, the benefit of, the benefit of reaching out to the public and having more public discussions is watered down a little bit, because a lot of that's already happened, right? So, that's why I feel like it's ripe to move forward with the amendments, the options that were presented, most of them by the mayor. I think this is, this is ripe. I think it's ready to go, and I think this is a good step forward. And I'm very happy that the efforts were made to change, or to evolve from the Appendix E or H, whatever it was, down to Section 7. That makes sense, just haven't taken the time to read it today and decide this evening. It makes more sense the way it is now, it's not just a standalone thing. So, yeah, I think we are at the, we should frankly, I just want to thank the Planning Commission for the work that they did to create this, to build this, the times we met with them multiple times, the public input that they did receive. So, I'm in favor of moving forward with this strategy. It's not a binding strategy, this is a plan to move forward to give us some direction, some vision, and I think something that we have discussed on this council in our city is we lack a long-term vision. This is a long-term vision. This is something we could, we can change and adapt and modify as we're moving forward, but it is a step forward, and I think we need a step forward at this point, and I think it's, this is a good step forward. Is it a perfect step forward? I don't want to throw out the good trying to find the perfect. This is a good step forward, and I support a lot of this, these things. So, I support it, and I think we should all move forward on it.
Chrissy, can you put me in the queue?
Absolutely. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I would agree. If you look through, just at the Planning Commission meetings alone, the number of meetings, the number of work sessions, they worked with the Human Services Commission as well, they worked with the City Council, in addition to the public outreach events, in addition to, I believe there were surveys done as well. So, you know, more public comments, always great, if we want to, you know, as we're out in the community, if you want to talk about this and we get more input, we can always amend things going forward. Nothing's permanent, right? That's the cool thing about the legislative process, is that we always, we always have the option of being smarter tomorrow. That's a quote from a colleague at work, that we always reserve the right to be smarter tomorrow. So, I would agree that this has had considerable input from the public. There is nothing in here that is telling us we have to go upzone the city, we have to upzone anything, none of that is in here. Just to clarify that, I know there were concerns about upzoning nowhere in here, does it tell us to go upzone anything? The only references to changes in zoning, I think, were great recommendations. It says, "If we are going to consider changes in zoning, we need to have a set of parameters created in advance for what the criteria would be to do that," so that those decisions are not made emotionally, but that when there is nothing in front of us to consider, we come up with what criteria must be met to change the zoning, so that we have a checklist, and we can make a reasonable and rational decision, and we don't allow any particular situation, because many of the situations that come in can be quite heartbreaking, and we don't want to make those decisions emotionally, we want to make them with data and reasonably. So, I think that's the only thing it mentions, it doesn't ever say we have to execute upon it, it just says, "If you're going to consider it, come up with some criteria." So, I just want to clarify for the public that this is not locking us into anything like that, it is just laying out ways that we can look at how we plan going forward, and I think that's exactly kind of what we heard from the public comment, even on the Sahali Way, was, you know, if growth, if we are going to take growth, let's have a plan and a strategy for how we're going to do it. I think this ties in with how we plan for the infrastructure as well. So, I think it's a great job, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission and the Human Services Commission for their input and their work on this.
Councilmember Ross.
Jeff, for clarification, what is, if we, what is the date that we would need to approve this by, before it kicks into the next 2023 major update? Do we have a month window? What's our deadline? I'm thinking in terms of what Deputy Mayor Moran suggested, that we have, maybe button it up, incorporate the revisions, have one last detailed read, final feedback, and incorporate one more, what time, how much time before it kicks over to the next comp plan?
So, there's no, there's no pressing, as I've tried to frame for you in Option 3, there's no mandated deadline or pressing need to get this done tonight, tomorrow, next month, or even in 2020. We're going to, in earnest, start the work on the 2023 comp plan update in 2020. So, you know, I certainly wouldn't recommend that you move this to the 2021 work program or later than that. I think we're going to need that foundation in place to start the comp plan update in earnest, and frankly, we're not going to have the staff resources to manage this at that time, anyway. So, you know, depending on, depending on what you wanted to do with it, in terms of if you were attempting to re-scope it, or how extensive finishing this process would be, I would certainly, 2020 work program is certainly on the table, maybe late 2020 would be kind of the outer edge of the zone that you'd be looking at. The challenge that we're facing right now, and again, I'll just say it again, is that maybe the, maybe the beginning of 2021, the challenge that we're facing right now is we've got, we have other things pressing in 2019 on our work program that we need to get moving with legislative review. And we do have some mandates, actually, to bring before you, that we actually do have to get done in 2019 for certain. So, which is why I've, again, respectfully put forward that, rather than maybe defer this in 2019, we just clear it off the boards for 2019, and we talk about it later this year when we talk about 2020, 2021 work programming. We've got a couple people, we've got a couple vacancies we're trying to fill currently, so Miriam's been great with donating some of her time to carry this forward here into the new year, working with me, but we're, again, we're full in terms of the work that we have to do that's already on the work program in 2019.
When do we receive notification of our next housing allocation? Like, year, month?
Well, sometime in 2020, most likely, there'll be some preliminary numbers come out. Depending on the dialogue and how it goes with the county, it could be the beginning of 2020, the end of 2020, we don't know for sure.
So, I'm concerned about moving this after that feature. I want to make sure we complete this document before allocations are considered, because I don't want any unintended consequences that Samamish somehow signals, hey, we can take on much more of the burden in the region, because we're always fighting to reduce and discount based on our access to transit, road, and highways, railways, et cetera. We're successful historically, but I'm afraid that I don't want to raise the wrong signal before that allocation. So, I don't, with that in mind, I don't suggest, based on that schedule, delaying it into the 2021 work plan.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, some of the points have been touched on before. The first point, I'll just follow on what Councilmember Aras said is correct, I mean, this exercise will help us prepare for those discussions that we're going to sit down with PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, and the county to look at our numbers, and all indications are, it's going to be a hefty number when you talk about a 50% expected increase in the population in Puget Sound. We're going to have to find, fight hard not to get 50% more citizens in our city to go through, so those numbers and houses is going to be significant, and I think this helps give us a foundation. As far as additional public outreach, I mean, there's been a tremendous amount of work, as was already listed out, I won't go over them, but if there is something that's been missing, let's let them know, because I didn't see anything missing from the surveys. I should point out that the extensive hearings were then incorporated by the Planning Commission. This came unanimously to us by the Planning Commission, and so, we have the opportunity that they're fresh on this, they're ready, as Shanna Collins said in her briefing, to start tackling these issues in more detail to help provide that guidance, and they have already the advantage of having reached out and worked with, not just our council direction that we gave them, but other commissions like Health direction that we gave them, but other commissions like Health and Human Services, and reaching out to the other organizations in the region. So, I would be supportive of moving this forward.
Councilmember Hornish.
Uh, yes, I want to make sure I'm on mute. Yeah, sorry. I do agree that we need to revise this plan. It is old and needs revision, and I really appreciate what the Planning Commission has done, the hard work they've done, Yeoman's task of talking with the public and everything. I think they made great progress. However, I don't think that we, as a council, even have what the vision of the city of SMM is at this point. So, it's really hard to do a subcomponent of the whole city for the housing strategy as to what the vision needs to be. For that reason, I would posit to you right now that our growth is currently limited under the GMA, given our B over C, and until we fix that issue, we can't grow anyhow. So, why are we talking about a growth or a housing strategy? Because there's nothing that can happen right now. So, I think we need to stay focused on the concurrency. I think it's premature to do this right now. Jeff just said it's not needed right now. Um, you know, I'm not even sure we know exactly what the amendments were tonight. We kind of got the general concept, though, to be fair. And I do also like the idea of doing more public input in, in that regard, to get that input and, and maybe a vision, and that could be in connection with concurrency education and process that we're talking about, too. And for those reasons, I would prefer that we not adopt this at this point, and I, I won't be approving to adopt Option Number 2.
Okay, all the lights are off, so we get to talk. So, first, you know, I went through the document. I appreciate that staff spent a lot of time in kind of reworking it. I appreciate that the Planning Commission spent a lot of time bringing this document to us, and I've looked at it a ton of different times, which is why my comments kind of came in waves relative to it as I tried to digest it. I think the key for me was when staff kind of, and Arthur Sullivan said it, too, but I think all of the, the, the strategies now that are in the table, consider, consider. It doesn't say we're doing it. It says we're going to consider it.
Right.
And I think that's fair, to consider it. But I think, to Councilmember Hornish's point, it is impossible to divorce what we're going to potentially consider up against our concurrency and what we have before us as far as some issues. But there are elements of this housing strategy that are not relative to growth, literally. We talk about the preservation of housing stock and homes that were constructed a long time ago, because those can be affordable houses, and if you tear them down to build two new houses in its place, based on existing zoning, you've lost something. And so, in its current state, because it, the document itself doesn't do anything unless we take policy action behind them to consider to, to do something with. So, the document itself is benign. It doesn't do anything. It guides us to say, "We should consider this." It doesn't say we're doing it. And to that end, I, I support moving it forward, because I think we need to get this off our plate, move on to the next thing. So, I don't see any more lights on. Yep, okay. All those in favor of this plan as amended?
Option 2 as amended.
Yeah, it's, yes, as amended by this evening. And is everyone comfortable with all the amendments since we went through them?
Well, that's the motion on the floor. We have that motion on the floor.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that everyone was comfortable with what they have since we kind of went, went through them one by one. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five to, the motion passes. Okay. Need to get an agenda back up here.
Chrissy, we've received several requests that when there are votes, that the nays be called out, because people in the audience sometimes can't figure out who voted for what, so.
Those always appear in the minutes.
Okay, as long as it's in the minutes.
They're in the minutes.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Next, we have an executive session to evaluate the qualifications.
Mayor, we need to go back. You pulled Adam from the consent agenda.
But I think we were going to, I parked that under number 12, so that would actually be, oh, yeah, no, I've got it scribbled at the very, very end.
Okay.
So, next, we have that executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for appointment to elective office pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101H.
Technically, Mayor, it's 1G.
1G.
Evaluate candidates for office.
Great, okay. I would say 30 minutes.
Ah.
I, I've got to, because otherwise, I don't even know who we're talking about if I don't bring. So, Lita, can we ask that, we got correspondence from current Planning Commissioner Larry Crandall, that he's still interested.
I, I see.
Okay, I, you did, yeah. So, can you put him on, can you add him on to that, just so he's on there?
Can we just put a check mark next to the people?
Yeah, but usually.
Well, but when they put him up?
No, no, I'm saying, what do we need to put on our?
Oh, yeah, I think you just mark.
Just put a check or something.
Yes.
Are we doing them all now, or are we going?
No, we'll go commission by commission. I think we need to, I, I took them all out of order, so I think, Lita, I don't know what you had up first, but maybe we don't do planning since you're adding a name.
I know that one.
Okay, well, why don't we just give you a, a second to add that and?
That gives me a second to look at my.
So, we're beginning with one?
No, we're waiting for Lita. You have several of any given commission's ballots because of, if, yeah, if we have to do it again.
Yeah, that's because round two of the votes, if we don't get a clear winner.
Lita, which commission do you want us to start with, so we know where to start?
First, let's all the agenda.
Okay, I'm not looking at the agenda.
Who wants first?
I don't know, I'm going to look here. It is landmarks.
Landmarks, all right. 50-50 shot.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize, I didn't look, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, we're ready.
What's the second one?
Hold on, she comes and picks them up first.
Who is she?
What's the next one?
All right, Cheryl, stuff the ballot box with my vote.
Landmark.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
And they say Latins are slow.
Oh, I need to get.
The, the next one is the Arts Commission.
Arts, all right.
But I don't think we need to do that yet, so hold tight, because we, I don't think there'll be any problem, but let's make sure.
I wanted to mention that Tom will be voting.
Right, so we need to, we need to wait on.
Right. We can, we can go through our notes and start.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, but we're going to hold.
And I am now on, just started my notes.
So, Tom, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes. So, we are doing the Landmarks Commission right now, and Lita's got our ballots already.
All right, my, you want me to announce my vote, right?
Yes.
My vote is Walt Carroll.
He's out of the gate.
And then, somebody needs to read those to me. Well, just, you could just read them to me, and I'll fill out the chart.
Next.
Yeah, that's good.
Mr. Stewart, Walt Carroll.
I'm on it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that one's done.
Oh, the deputy mayor, sorry. Okay.
That's it done already.
Okay. Okay, yes, thank you.
We don't take congratulations, Walt?
To Walt.
Yep, I think Walt Carroll is our new King County Landmark Commission. Yep, I think Walt Carroll is our new King County Landmark Commission member. So, while this is not here, but congratulations to Walt.
Shall we start punching our ballots?
So, arts is what we're...
On the list?
Arts.
Not here, make it easier to read. I say again.
You have mine. That's okay. I was the first one to give it to you. That's okay.
So, Tom?
Oh, no, are we already on arts? Is that what we're... Oh, oh, sorry, you don't have mine. Oh, no, you do. You do, you have it. It should be the first one on the bottom.
Six?
Okay. The one sitting on top.
Do you want to do Tom first?
Tom, would you like to go ahead?
You bet. My votes for the 2019 Arts Commission is ballot is Ashley Arrington, Claridell Shedd, Echo Chernick.
Okay.
Chris Ross, you got yours coming up the boards now.
Oh, both.
Oh, you don't wanna split up the...
Oh, yeah. marital bliss.
Okay.
So, Claridell's already been done.
Claridell Shedd.
Stewart. Ooh, going down low. There you go.
Okay. Okay.
There you go. So, two positions are filled.
Yep, we got them.
So, like, we have our...
So, we have our three Arts Commissioners: Ashley Arrington, Claridell Shedd, and Echo Chernick.
For these, we need to put them in positions?
Oh, okay, so we have... We'll go in the, what we stated before, which is the highest vote-getters will get the longer terms.
That's correct. Claridell and Echo.
And then Ashley will get the, is it two-year?
Five, and Echo.
So, the... Let's see. So, just for, Ashley appears on your Parks Commission ballot as well, so you'll want to remove her from the Parks Commission. And in theory, I suppose she could...
So, we're doing Parks next?
No, but I'm just, well, I don't know, it might be.
Oh, fine.
No, we're doing Human Services.
Alright, that's my... Okay, there will be two that you can see, so what were my notes on this?
And I recall that Josh Amato said he was not, he had removed his name from, that that was not correct, yeah. So, he should not be selected there. Pardon? Don't vote for Josh. He said that was not supposed to be, he was not supposed to appear on the Human Services. Yep.
Not as easy, huh? There you go, thank you, Cheryl.
Yes.
The queen worship you?
Tom first.
You got a pile of those over there.
Tom, if you wanna give your votes?
Okay, my vote to Human Services, just to confirm, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Is Jody Nishioka and Nushina Mir.
They're out of the gates.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Oh, they're breaking the trend.
Which stood up a little bit.
Yeah, you knew that she was gonna do that. The deciding vote. Here come the deciding votes.
Thank you.
Up to now, our shot groups have been pretty close together.
Okay, so I think it's, we're returning Jody and Nushina back to the Human Services Commission. Okay, so now, we are moving to the Planning Commission. I gotta consult my notes here.
You're hearing pens tapping now.
Tom, you could go ahead with your vote.
Alright, my vote for the Planning Commissions are Larry Crandall for the two-year position, Josh Amato, and Mark Lewis.
Josh Amato. And, which was the other one?
Mark Lewis.
Okay, sorry. It's not coming. It's coming over here, because I added them later.
Protected cells? It might be a protected cell.
Well, but it's still showing that he has a vote, so it's telling.
The vote's there, I'll just...
It's telling over on the side.
Maybe it's the font color?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe it's a hidden field.
I'm sorry, it's not...
Well, as long as it's telling over on the side, right?
Yeah, I will, I will correct it, I have all the sheets.
It's fine.
So, I will know with Tom. Okay. Stewart.
I get to vote for Larry, just not under the ball.
Yeah.
Shannon Collins. Larry Crandall for the two-year. Deputy Moran. Josh Amato. Mark Lewis.
Oh, yeah, he's not, it isn't.
Marjorie Carron. Josh Amato. Mark Lewis. Councilmember Ritchie. Caitlin Schreiber. Mark Lewis. Shannon Collins. Councilmember Ross. Josh Amato. I know.
So, it looks like we have them all in there. Mark Lewis, Josh Amato, and Larry Crandall, even though Larry's isn't adding up, there's five there.
Should be six. Oh, right, yeah.
Right?
Larry's is actually six.
Oh, that's right, because Tom's isn't showing up, so six, okay. So, Larry will have the two-year term, since that's his preference.
Okay.
And the other two, Mark Lewis and Josh Amato, will have the four-year terms.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm, maybe I'm seeing to...
It's not counting, right? So, Larry, Larry, Tom also voted for Larry Crandall, it's just there's a number in there?
Okay.
And it's not telling up correctly on the right-hand side? Okay, so next, we're on to the Parks. Ashley, Ashley's been appointed to a commission already.
You did Parks already?
I did.
You guys went too quick on me. Alright, let's see here.
That was the preferences are on the top, and secondary choices are on the bottom, so it wasn't their primary choice. That's why.
Did we have notes for Parks? Oh, here they are, I see.
Oh, I did.
I see them now. Only one came, or two came to speak, that's the issue.
No, we had Ashley and Bill, they all, they all interviewed as well, but they interviewed under different commissions. So, Ashley interviewed under, I think, Arts, which we have just appointed her to. Bill Patterson interviewed under Human Services, and Sarvinder Marawawa interviewed under Arts.
Tom, you wanna give your vote for the Parks?
You bet. My three votes are for the Parks, Irelis Vanderhoff, Seth Van Grinson, and Sarvinder Marawawa.
Tom's just not allowed to vote. I thought it was...
There we go.
Like, Tom's just not allowed to vote with me.
What is that for? Oh, okay, I'm like... I don't know where the alligator clip went.
Sorry?
Oh, wait.
She did, she's already on.
I was trying to remember which of the two, I was still caught off the beach, I think.
Yeah.
I gotta look at that list of...
Still paying attention, right? She's already on a commission, she's already on the Arts Commission. Okay. So, it looks like we...
A moment of history.
It's not identical, though. Okay, alright, so our new Parks Commissioners are Seth Van Grinson, Sarvinder Marawawa, and I hope I'm pronouncing that name right, and Erlys Vanderhoff.
Irelis.
Irelis, it's Irelis, there we go. I got it right yesterday, and I ruined it today.
We'll need to approve the resolutions, make motions on each resolution.
Do you want them all together, or separate?
All together.
But they're all separate on the agenda, though. What do we...
Yeah.
Okay, ooh, boy, you're gonna have to put those back up for me. Did you write them all down? Good. Okay, so I need a motion appointing one, one member to the King County Landmarks Commission, and that was Walt Carroll.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, by vote of seven-zero, Walt Carroll will be our King County Landmarks Commissioner. Need a resolution appointing three members to the Smamish Arts Commission. Those members are Ashley Arrington for a two-year term, Claridell Shedd for a four-year term, and Echo Chernick for a four-year term.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, by vote of seven-zero, those are our new Arts Commissioners. Okay. Need a motion appointing two members to the Human Services Commission. Those members are Jody Nishioka and Nushina Mir.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by vote of seven-zero, those are our two new Human Services Commissioners. Okay, I need a motion appointing three members to the Smamish Planning Commission. Those members are Josh Amato for a four-year term, Mark Lewis for a four-year term, and Larry Crandall for a two-year term.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I wanna thank Shannon Collins for her service, and she's been exemplary in the work that she's been doing in representing the citizens and the Planning Commission. And I thought she had a great presentation, and so I wanna thank her for her years of service to the council, to the city, and to the citizens.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four-three, the motion passes. Okay. We need a motion to approve three members to the Parks and Recs Commission. Those are Erlys Vanderhoff, Seth, wait, that's the Parks, yep, no, that's right, Seth Van Grinson, and Sarvinder Marawawa.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven-zero, those are our new Parks Commissioners. Okay, new business. Council reports. Oh, right, thank you. See, I wrote it on there, and I skipped right over it anyway. So, we need to go back, we pulled from consent, item number three, which was the resolution replacing the city's master fee schedule. Councilmember Hornish, you remove that, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I would. I'd like to get a better understanding of the requirement to run this for each single-family resident application. I got a little bit of information in email, but I'm not sure I fully understand it yet. So, I'd like to first better understand it, and I would preface it with, let's not get back into a discussion about the B over C, please. I only wanna focus on this fee, and as to why it needs to be run for each S, single-family residence, please.
Yes, and again, this is, we're looking at recovering our costs in doing that, and as you have mentioned, previously, we packaged these, and when we had ten, we ran those, so we was able to prorate it. But because we have such a thin margin here, is what we're finding in, in doing this, is we have to run those individually to determine where the failure falls. If we were to batch them and run them, and then run into failure, then we would have to start back at the top, and the question is then, when do you collect the fees? How much do you collect? And that's kind of the guidance we've been operating under, so we can look at these and determine where that failure would fall in, in any grouping that we would have. The other issue that we're running into is these have come in very slow, so in even getting the ten right now, you could be waiting for a good period of time, and I think that's, that's gonna open you to criticism too, of why aren't you going ahead and running my concurrency test? So, it's kind of a real-world issue that we've run in here, run into in just doing this, at least in the early going. Maybe as we get down the road further, it... Maybe as we get down the road further, it might give us some more opportunities, but right now, that's kind of where we're at.
So I'm a little concerned about adding this not insignificant fee for a single-family residence, I guess, is where I'm going. Is, and if we don't adopt this, you're saying that we may not know that there's a failure from this one, because they might be number eight, but until two more come in, we wouldn't know that there's a failure of that grouping of 10, is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there anything that we can do to change that? So if it's a group, and this is a legal question, I guess, for Mike, I don't know under the concurrency, and since it's kind of open under our interim development regs that we're talking about, is there any way that we could say, look, we're going to keep the prorated cost, we won't run it every time, but do it after the 10, but if it fails after the 10, those 10 already can, have gotten their concurrency certificate, so it's not like they have to tear anything down. But we allow the concurrency certificate to be issued if it's only one single-family residence, until you get to the 10. Now, once they get to the 10 and it fails, that means number 11 couldn't come in, obviously, if it has any impact on our Sahale issue. I'm just trying to figure out a way of not putting the burden on that single-family residence app.
I think, Tom, it's less a legal question, frankly, more of a policy call. One way to do it is just not charge the full fee. That obviously costs the city some money, but that maybe gets to, if I'm understanding your question correctly, or your inquiry correctly, maybe that's how you go about it. You know, another issue about batching these in 10s, and it hasn't occurred yet, it may never occur, but at some point, if it takes too long, then there's an argument being made, or could be made, that we're preventing people from vesting, because they need their concurrency certificate. So that's an issue we'd like to avoid as well. So a practical solution is to not charge the full fee, or find some other way to accommodate something less than the full fee.
Well, yeah, I struggle with that, because now you're spending taxpayer dollar instead of the person that needs to pay for it, so to speak, but I still like the prorata. Can we not say that you don't have to pass a concurrency for a single-family residence, as long as you're in that 10, so that we can do a prorated of the 10 cost for those, and then wait until the 10 to see if number 11 can not be passed?
Well, we already have a failure.
So Cheryl, do you want... Tom, Cheryl Paston is here, she may be able to help.
Okay.
Good evening, for the few residents who are here. Cheryl Paston, Deputy Public Works Director. Councilmember Hornish, the reason why we are running each application is because we have been informed that because there is a failure that is unaddressed, we cannot make the failure worse. And the only way that we can determine that is if we run the model. If we hold on to, say, 10, or wait until there are 10 or more, if that batch passes, then yes, by inference, all of the applications pass. But if we hold on to the 10, and it fails, we have to know exactly which application failed. So that means we would have to then go back and run each individual application through the model. If we have only charged the applicants the prorated fee, you know, we could set up the system so that if we have to run each individual application, then we would have to go back to the applicant and recover the cost, unless the city somehow decided to pay for the cost of running that model. So there, as our council has said, there are issues with waiting until you get a batch of 10. But we were told that we cannot make the failure any worse.
So that's what I want to better understand, then. So it's because we have a current failure under the current V over C that we are going to make permanent, presumably, at some point, and whatever that is. And I hesitate, because I don't want to get back into that conversation. But it, once we have that, if we, if there is no failure, we would then not have to charge this for each single-family residence, is that correct?
That's correct. We would go back to the batch, batching the applications to 10, and prorate the cost.
Can we not make a policy to exempt single-family residence applications for now, until we get there? Then we wouldn't have to run it for each application, right?
That probably would be a council call, but those applications do, in fact, generate trips.
Councilmember Hornish, do you have more? Because I've alighted on here.
I'll defer and come back if I need to.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm looking for a single-home individual test fee of $4,932, basically $5,000. It's a pretty steep bite that's being taken. Isn't there a way to, at least, if you're doing a single house versus that you're, or you're subdividing your plot, that seems like a pretty steep price to put onto it. I mean, that's almost getting up to our parks fees, and stuff to come on, at this point, and so it seems like excessive, onerous for the small ones. I could see if you're going to be doing the development, that that can be taken up by a number of homes, and absorbed more easily, but this one seems to be pretty onerous to put on. And frankly, there is a question, what happens as we start going, and we start changing our capacity level, or looking at the volume and changing it, and then somebody's paid to this, and told that he's failed, but would have passed under the next version because of it? Does he run another test, or?
Runs another test.
And so then he could be $10,000.
And again, let me be clear, we, again, we contract this service, so that is, that is the charge to the city for running the concurrency test.
The administrative cost, is that correct?
It is, it does add, for the single-family, it includes one hour of staff time to review the results.
And what was the cost before, for the 20, for the last level of services to run a concurrency test?
It's in here.
It's on there.
It's the red line.
The red line.
It was 612 times 10, right?
Oh, down there.
2018 costs were actually a fair amount less, because this year, we now have to run the AM and the PM intersections, and corridors and segments. That's the biggest reason why the cost has jumped from 2018 to 2019.
AM and PM, though, because we were...
AM and PM.
But we had levels of intersections, and a V over C previous, though.
But now it's AM and PM.
Right, so it's just the AM and PM, okay.
And actually, our consultant was sort of eating part of the cost last year as well. I mean, I think we've been good clients for them, and so they were, they were kind of willing to help us out, but their costs have increased as well, but we have added more tests to run.
So we need a motion to move this one forward.
I move that we pass the new fee schedule.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any additional discussion?
Yeah, put me in the queue.
Go ahead.
I'm still trying, there's got to be a better solution to this, in my opinion. I just don't see why we have to just do this, and I would actually prefer to think through it a little bit more, and even do what I just said, as a policy, exempt up to X number of single-family residences that can still build, or something. But, and maybe even qualify that, if it's a one lot application, you know, up to 40 one lot, until we figure out our V over C issue, and get that solved. It just seems too onerous to me. I'm done.
Let me suggest this to you.
I think just because, unless the city is willing to pay these costs, because you're going to have these coming at you, I would suggest to you that we go ahead and approve this, and we will keep putting our heads together, and if we can come up with a better solution, we'll definitely bring that back to you, because I think we're all sensitive to this cost. I just don't know what that is, at this present time.
I've got a quick question. If we wanted to explore this, and that part's twofold, but I'll come back to that, could we pass the bulk of this fee schedule? Is this the only change in here?
Yes.
Okay, it's the only change in here, so it doesn't make any sense, we've already passed the rest of it. If we diminish this cost, then technically, we're distributing that burden to all taxpayers, because we're going to have to pay for it anyway.
That's correct.
Okay, I don't see any more lights on for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 5-2, we have passed that fee schedule. Okay. Now we are on to council reports. Let me scroll back down here. We need a motion to extend, please.
Move to extend till executive session 11 o'clock.
You'll have to stay till 11:00. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of extending to 11:00 PM, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 5-2, we will extend till 11:00 PM. Okay, council report, I'll try and do this really quick. I asked for two feedback points from council, and my council report, the first, at the PIC, the Public Issues Committee, through SCA, there was some discussion there relative to transit and road maintenance planning. There is no funding plan for King County Metro, and the question before the PIC was, is there an appetite for voters to consider a levy? I gave you a little bit of background there, which is Seattle basically buys service right off the top. They ran a levy to their voters to get additional King County Metro service. And without, I think the SCA's idea was to get out in front of, or at least be on pace with Seattle, in case they go back out for a levy, if the region wants to go out for that. So there was a question about appetite for voters, and I'm seeking your feedback to that end. Councilmember Valderrama.
As I recall, Seattle did that because there was a King County Metro Proposition 1 that was put across. Every city except for Seattle voted it down, and said, we were not going to take those costs, and so they then levied themselves to do it, and it mostly benefits them, that we're subsidizing. So I don't see why we're going to try to get ahead of them, shooting themselves and serving themselves.
No, 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 this would be, if we ran a levy, we being not Sammish, we being everyone else except for Seattle, essentially, is that you might get the benefit of the Seattle voters to vote for the levy, but it would provide services out here, too. So again, the question is not, you know, where the services are, the question is, is there an appetite?
I'm opposed, especially in this climate, that we're saying that the biggest issue the voters have is how the cost of living and taxes.
Okay, that's the feedback I'm looking for. Does anyone else have any?
I feel the same way.
I would say that traffic is our number-one issue, and not doing everything in our power to get more transit here, seems like we're not addressing it. We said it was the absolute number-one issue. We even heard tonight of people saying they would be in favor of subsidizing bus services before building more roads. So I don't think we can summarily dismiss it, because I think transit is important. I think it is the only way we get out of the mess that we're in.
Actually, can I weigh back in, Chris?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
I think Pam's point is valid, and I generally agree with that, but our past history has been, when we're paying for stuff, we don't get any benefit. And that's kind of what we've seen with the ST 3, everything else. So for that reason, I just don't think it's a good idea for our Sammish residents. But conceptually, I agree with Pam.
Yeah, I think my, maybe. My knee-jerk reaction was, there would have to be equity in it, because of the bad taste in the mouths of voters out here from ST 3, frankly, that we pay a lot into it and don't get a lot back out. So, Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Seattle.
Yeah, I agree with the equity concerns, so I don't support it.
But if there was an equity clause?
I think that was a question for you.
I'd just remind the council that there was a sub-equity in ST 3, and that we still got treated poorly, to put it nicely.
Okay. So the other thing, I was, I gave some information about the King County Parks Levy. We had that presentation done. Kirkland's drafting a letter, just for your edification, they're concerned about voter fatigue, as it pertains to it. SCA is likely to adopt a position on this levy, and there were two options, if you'll remember, which was the status quo, and then there was the, what did they call it? There was like the added benefit of a few extra things, and we had that big presentation on it. And so at some point, we'll like, I'll likely be asked to weigh in for Sammish, as to whether or not SCA takes a position, and the position will be the status quo, which was, I think, 13 cents, yes, and the enhanced option was 18 cents per $1,000 of average valuation. So I don't necessarily need your feedback right now, but know that we may, as a council, need to decide whether we're going to support one side or the other, as far as enhanced or status quo, because SCA is likely to take a position on that levy. So.
You don't need that for...
Don't need that right now, but I want you guys to be thinking about it, because I will be coming back.
I'm ready, but go ahead.
Well, I don't know if everybody else is, but, and then the other question and feedback I needed is, the King County Charter Review is going on, someone at the city received information, I'm assuming it was staff, but I have no idea who, and so the question is, is do we want to comment on it? Do we want to just simply comment through SCA? There are two current sitting PIC members, Toby Nixon from Kirkland, and...
Good guy.
And Sean Kelly from Maple Valley, and they're both serving on that Charter Review. So there, I mean, we can comment through SCA, or we can choose to comment, but I just don't know who the staff contacted, and who's got that information. And I gave you context in here about the Charter Review, and actually, our King County Councilmember Kathy Lambert, I think it was either today or yesterday, just put out a push seeking information from constituents on it as well. So there's an opportunity for the public to engage on that King County Charter Review. So, can we find out who from staff may have received information from the county on that? And I guess the question for council is, is do we, as a body, want to comment on it, or do we want to just passively do that through SCA?
Toby is not passive.
Well, he's just on, he's on the review, so he's, he's not SCA's, you know, commenter specifically, but...
Have there been draft motions submitted yet?
I don't think so, and you can go on to, they do have information online.
I saw Kathy's Facebook post, so I guess, from my perspective, I'd rather wait to see what drafts come out, and then, you know, make some comments on those.
Okay, very good. That's all I had, as far as feedback needed. Are there other council reports? Councilmember Stewart.
So I just received the agenda for the RIAA 8 meeting this week, and one of the items that we are going to discuss, as you know, Snohomish, or maybe you don't know, but Snohomish had pulled out of the agreement. So there is going to be a discussion about budget and cost sharing, and I didn't know kind of if we had a strong feeling either way. I can't remember, but I thought we had approved in our budget to absorb the additional amount, but I couldn't really remember, so I wanted to see what the council's feeling there was, if we have to pick up the slack for them pulling out. Do we still want to fund the efforts there for the salmon recovery?
You said we had already decided that, or we could absorb Snohomish?
What's that?
I was going to say, I'll see what the damage is, what is their withdrawal?
Do you have dollars associated with it?
I can forward you, I'll forward you the packet, I don't see a lot of details there, it's more of a discussion point, but I'll forward you the packet, and if you have any comments, just...
I would suggest if the RIAA folks have a number that they're losing, that we go about the other membership and do our part, if that's what the...
That's kind of, I think that's kind of where it's going to end up having to go, or we cut back the services that RIAA 8 provides. But my sense was, and I wanted to confirm this, was that, given all of the efforts that we're doing around the watersheds, and the salmon, and things, that while it is not a zero number, it is not a huge number, and so I didn't know where people felt. So some of the questions were, you know, is maintaining the current level of RIAA 8 services a priority, right? And how would we want to try to absorb that? So I will, again, I'll forward this to the entire council, and if you have any strong feelings either way, just let me know. I'm not sure if we're going to make a decision, or just decide. I'm not sure if we're going to make a decision or just discuss it. It wasn't clear on the agenda item, so.
Done? Okay. Any other council reports? Councilmember Valderrama?
Eastside Fire and Rescue, two points on Fall City. There's been the discussion of the merger into District 10. There is also a proposal being looked at that for one year, that there'd be a possible contract option, that they will be analyzed, just so that it goes into cycle with levies and that. So there'll be more comment on that. Also, on the PFOS, there is supposed to be a factual report that'll be being issued here shortly. And in March, the Board of EFER will be briefed on that. Again, it will be just a factual. It won't be assigning any blame or anything else at this point in time. And additionally, up to now, there's been a great relationship between EFER, Department of Ecology, and Isakuwa, and the Ecology has given EFER and Isakuwa, for this investigation, $70,000. So all of our costs of the analysis are currently being paid for by Ecology. And that's my report.
Very good. That's more, Russ, anything?
Deputy Mayor Moran and I spent Saturday virtually all day at the King Conversation District. It was a real good meeting. We had breakout sessions on tree forestry issues, such as drainage and fire, fire safety. We also went to a clean water breakout session. They pushed, they, many of us from the sound cities represented there were providing feedback to them on what are potential duplication of services, what are the services that are required. They also shared that based on needs and requests from the population that they serve, that they're seeing about a 49% increase in cost in today's dollars. But if you carry those dollars out to the future, next five-year period, which is the length of the inter-local agreement, it actually is just, brings you back to where you were. So you really, you have, so the increase in costs is, was a conversation piece, and some of the bigger cities like Bellevue said, no, we don't want to see the rate go up per parcel, and so we're going to have, they're going to have to wrestle with that.
Deputy Mayor Moran, anything, or no?
Nope. Okay.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, just a quick morbid announcement. On Thursday at 11:00 AM is the Samamish Chamber of Commerce luncheon at Sahali Golf Club. And one of the speakers, the keynote speaker, the discussion point will be around sound transit. And I know that that's a very important issue as we discuss our, you know, our transportation options in Samamish. So it'll be a good opportunity for council members and the public to come and ask questions and get some information from sound transit themselves. I'll be there. It's 30 bucks a ticket, I think. Anyway, yeah, 30 bucks, members, I don't know. Join the chamber. It's worthwhile. So yeah, that's Thursday, the, what's that? That'd be the 17th at 11:00 AM at Sahali Golf Club, and you can join or sign up to come and buy lunch at the Samamish Chamber website.
You can even just show up.
Yep. You can just show up and do it then, so. Sometimes they run out of space, though.
Sometimes it's a very popular one.
It's better to register in advance.
Although I doubt it on this one.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have several items.
Sorry, can I jump in real quick?
Yes, please. Sorry, Tom.
Sorry, I was on mute, and I didn't realize it. Just real quick, as you know, Councilmember Ross and I are continuing our discussions with the YMCA. We're trying to get those questions and follow-up discussion points that we had with them from our first meeting, and we should get those off to them here soon, if not tomorrow or later this week. And then we have like 30 days, so we'll be reporting back on that, but just to, so everybody's aware that we are continuing that process.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry. No, go ahead, Chris.
Larry, would you like to see the report before we release it? How do you want us to distribute? I got names of who should receive it from the Y. I got three individuals identified by Dave Meyer. So what's your preference?
Yeah, it'd be good if we had a copy as well, because it'd be helpful, and then we can distribute that to the Y if you'd like, or you could do that either way.
So should I, I'll forward a copy to you and Mike tomorrow?
Yeah.
And then from there, say, good, and then I will send it off. I'll forward it to the Y recipients.
Can we copy the council on that?
I will. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
As I say, I have a few items for you this evening. The first item, I wanted to talk to you about emergency management. And I've mentioned to you in the past about the possibility of moving that underneath Again, it would be, end up being a contractual situation, but that contract is not with EFNR. It's actually with the other members who form that consortium, because EFNR is not a political subdivision. But right now, that's very conceptual. I've sent you the outline of kind of what we're looking at and what the specifics are. I've mentioned to you in the past in emails, as well as in the manager's reports this evening, what I see are the benefits for doing that. There are some rough spots we still have to iron out, and that will be further conversations if we decide to go down that road. I didn't want to move down that road with further conversations if that is not something that you think is, is worth having that discussion on. And I know that some of you've had some questions, so I wanted to answer any questions that you had in regards to that.
I've got a question.
Okay. Hold on two seconds. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for looking down that path. I think with a city our size, a single person trying to do the emergency management planning is too big of a task. So I think it makes sense to try to work with an organization like EFER, who does this kind of thing as their core competency. So there may be some rough spots, and we certainly need to work through that, but I think that, that on the whole, it makes a lot of sense. So thank you.
And again, if, once, as we get further in these discussions, if those rough spots become too big of hurdles, of course, that's something that we won't, we won't tackle, but I, I think we can address those. And again, this, this particular arrangement is between EFNR and the City of Samamish. So you're not going to see a lot of change in the way this thing operates, other than the management control in that situation, so.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, so prior to my election to the council, we didn't have any emergency management personnel dedicated to the city. So I have some concerns about diffusing that role to something broader on the region. However, I understand, and I think it does make sense, that it might be more of a regional emergency management, because we're not an island, even though we talk about ourselves being an island a lot. But I'm a little concerned that if we're just giving our person over to them to help out in the regional, what does that do? Doesn't that reduce our emergency management for the city? And if that's the case, I have some grave concerns that we'd be going down this path. And I'd rather keep it, because I don't think we've done a good job on our emergency management in the past, and I felt we were on the right track, and I'm afraid this may sidetrack us and start going the other way again. So it's just a general concern.
Well, I have that concern as well. If it's a matter of making this transfer, and then we try to do a regional approach with this one person, I could see where that could possibly dilute what we're doing. At least, my vision of this, though, is if this is workable, and again, the initial two-year term that we're talking about is actually between the City of Samamish and EFNR. As others, if they see a benefit in this, they're going to have to buy into this and hopefully bring resource into it as well. So this, so you have, again, some, some depth of resource in doing this, as well as you've got more than one person that's trying to cover this entire region. Of course, part of the benefit is, if you do get into a major disaster, earthquake, earthquake will be the primary one, is you're going to be competing for a lot of the similar type of resources in terms of the recovery effort. And that's where being a region can make a lot of sense versus being a city that, that has some of the challenges we have just getting here. So those are some of the rough spots that we have to work through and make sure, in fact, that we're all on the same page as we try to move to a contractual situation.
Well, that's, I guess that's kind of the concern I have, and I appreciate that. I guess the biggest question I would have, then, is who is this person or City of Samamish Emergency Management answering to? EFER or the city?
They would be under the management of EFER.
Which is a regional, which, I don't know, I, I just got to better understand how that doesn't dilute the city's emergency management. But help me understand that as we go forward, then.
Okay. But again, that contract at this time is with the City of Samamish, and we're the only ones contracting for that. So I'd say you're not going to see a lot of change in that situation.
But if EFER asks him to do something, and he's their, they are his boss, then he's going to be doing other things for EFER, not for the city.
Well, we would probably have, have difficulty if he's doing things for EFER on the region, and we're the ones that's paying for, for that service. I mean, it's actually contracting a service that's being provided to us, not, not to the rest of EFNR.
Gotcha. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I've raised a number of questions, and there's still issues that I have with this. We are early in the contract, and I understand that. Wearing my EFNR hat, it's great. EFNR should have this.
In the concept. We're not to the contract yet.
Oh, concept. Sorry, wrong word. But EFNR hat, it's great. And I think I voted that way the other day. I think they should have one. They're long past due for one. Whether we should be giving up ours is where I also have the issue. And that comes down to, you know, making sure that we've got security for our person that would be taking that spot for after two years. And what happens for two years, they're assigned to us, so that we won't really see a change. But at two years, if everybody else starts wanting to buy into time, that's where I have a concern. And, and then I also have, before we start deciding that we need to make changes, are we where we want to be with our plans at the city before we do that? So those are just some of the questions I still have to have answered, so.
And again, some of that's a discussion that will take place down the road, and again, would, would be precipitate a, either an extension of a contract or new contract. In terms of, are we where we need to be with our plan? I think all of us would indicate we still have a lot of work that we need to do in terms of the planning. And again, don't confuse, you've got a couple of things that goes on in emergency management. There is the, the planning and all the preliminary work, and then there's actually the, the disaster, if you run into that, and working through that, which is an all-hands-on-deck type thing, and there's certain responsibilities that everyone will perform. And then there's the recovery. This is more than any one individual. This is a city effort that's not only going to involve our entire staff, at least those that, that can respond, and they're all required to respond, but it also, it's bringing in the community, so they're a piece of that as well. So there's, it's a big effort getting that organized, getting that moved forward.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, again, under this conceptual program that's being discussed, I think that we are not conceptually giving up our person, because even on this idea, he would be contracted for Samamish and would be dedicated to Samamish under that contract, at which point, we can bring him back, conceptually, if it's a him. And that, so he could come back. The advantages I see from both the EFER hat, putting that on, is obviously, it allows EFER to start doing more in the emergency management, which is a priority, not just for Samamish, but regionally, and the coordination that's going to have to take place. I mean, we keep talking about us being an island and on a plateau. Well, if there is a real natural disaster of the magnitude that we're talking about, guess who's cut off and only has two entrances, and we need to have that response, so we would have someone at the table. Additionally, I see the advantage for Samamish in responding to any kind of emergency, and it doesn't even have to be a riptide 9.0. It could also just be a snow emergency, is that EFER is in much more contact daily basis with NORCOM, it's with the advanced medical care, and that, so our person there, conceptually, will have more resources and more contact points than they would currently have here in the city, just because of, that's what they're doing all the time. Every time we're out there, we're being updated on NORCOMs and the responses and the 911 failures and that, and how they're responding to it, that as a city, we're calling in. And furthermore, if there is an issue, someone from Samamish Emergency Management calling in to rent into the crisis under a King County is going to get a lower priority than EFER calling in from the regional Eastside Fire and Rescue. So that alone would give us a higher stature in that priority list, because it's a bigger area that's being covered. That's my support for that conceptual idea.
And let me indicate, too, because this is not just an isolated discussion. Mr. Stevens is our person who performs the task force today. And one of the next steps, because I know this is a little unsettling for him as well, is for, to get him and the chief together, make sure that is not one of the rough spots we've got to crawl over in this thing, so.
Not done here yet. I want to ask a couple of questions. So if it's Samamish, that means obviously we are funding it, and it says eventually there could be cost savings in the future if it's shared. You mentioned that we'd have more than one person. But if, what Councilmember Valderrama said, which is that they don't have someone specific for emergency services through EFER, then it's still one person, unless they're got a plan that I'm just not aware of there with how they're going to utilize services for emergency manager. And I would think that we are already overlapping to some degree with Eastside Fire and Rescue, or at least I'd hope we're overlapping with Eastside Fire and Rescue on our emergency preparedness. And I think the concern that I expressed earlier is that I want to be sure that Samamish is covered, because I think Councilmember Hornish highlighted the fact that prior to us coming on the council, you know, the city came under a lot of scrutiny for its lack of emergency preparedness, which is why the council enacted to bring on a, an emergency manager. And I don't, I can see it both ways. You know, if I look at it from Samamish's perspective, well, you know, I want to have control over that in-house, and not that we don't if we have that contract with EFER. And I understand that emergencies have no jurisdictional boundaries, right? An earthquake doesn't know to crack right on our, you know, border, right? It's going to go where it's going to go. And so to that end, it makes sense. But if we've coordinated regionally from internally, then that may not make a difference either. But I think I, my concern was, is there a policy-related decision here for council to make in, in outsourcing our emergency services to EFER? And again, my, my main concern, just making sure that Samamish is, is covered as far as our emergency preparedness goes.
And that, that's a concern that I share as well. Now, and again, going back to the arrangement that I've outlined for you, is you'll, if you look at the responsibility of both parties, and one of those is EFER indicates they will provide a person to our EOC in those, any emergency situation, because it could happen. Mr. Stevens could be on vacation, and so we've got to have someone here to kind of help perform that, that role as well. Is there a policy decision for the council? Yes, there is. There's actually two. There is this, is this a concept you want me to continue to explore? Are you satisfied with, with where we're at? That's the first bridge. The second is, there will be a contract that you will actually have to approve with fellow jurisdictions, and they're going to have to make some decision whether they're even going to go down that road with, with EFER, so.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. So one is, obviously, I share the concern, we don't want to give up a resource and get less in return, but that's the magic of contracts, that we can make sure that we write it in such a way that, that the resource that we're paying for doesn't start doing work for the region as opposed to focusing on Samamish. So I think that, you know, that's what good, good contract lawyers are for.
I'll find one of those.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. But I do think that in terms of getting us where we need to be, in our conversations, I think the guidance and the management from EFER will be the big benefit that we would see. Not that you, Mr. City Manager, aren't great at what you do, but that emergency management may not be your, your area of expertise. So I think that's where we can see, see that benefit. So I, I mean, I don't know if you need direction now, but I would like to see us continue down the concept and see how it starts to play out. And then, like you said, we're not committing to anything now. We can see what those details start to work out to be. But I do think conceptually that it is more of a benefit than it is a downside for us at this point. So thanks.
And I would, I'd indicate to you, if, if I was going to be the manager on the long term, I might look at this a little different, because I've had a lot of background in emergency management. It's not something that a lot of managers have. More and more, getting it with more disaster More and more, getting it with more disasters that we have around the nation these days, so that may be something, as you interview folks, you might look at that. But we'll keep you posted as we move through this discussion. Second item I wanted to mention to you is, we have been looking at our packet preparation process. And one of the things that kind of came out of that discussion, along with a lot of other things, but the one I wanted to bring to you this evening, was actually, did you want to look at a different agenda format? And I've given you an example of that, and kind of picked some items from past agenda and gave that to you. It's really just a numbered, structured agenda that really gives you the ability to move things around a little easier. And again, for us to try to make sure that those items that we think are going to have the most significance or most folks in attendance look for, that we put those to the top of the agenda. Now, you wouldn't do that in all cases. You might have an item that has lots of things on it. But if you had a topic like V over C that you were discussing, especially early on, you'd still probably have that top of your agenda, because that's a high priority item that has a big community following to that. So just wanted to have you take a look at that, see if that's something that you're interested in. Doesn't require a decision this evening, but if it is, let us know. There are some changes, I think, some of your rules and all, that you'll have to make if you want to move to that type of format or something similar to that. We can give you lots of different versions to take a peek at. But I've worked under that type of agenda before. It's a lot easier to manage than having things broke up in different sections, so. But that's really, you can do it lots of different ways. There's no magic to it. Still got to work through the agenda. Try not to bog down in big debates. Wanted to mention item four. There's a memo attached to that. I won't go through all that with you, but I'm planning on moving in that direction, unless you have any objections to that. And again, that's not something that you have to indicate this evening, but here in the next few days, one way or the other. I want to mention too, right now I have the retreat scheduled for the evening of February the 8th and the morning of February 9th. Still waiting to see if we can resolve all conflicts, but I'm going to be working towards preparation on that. And so kind of keep those dates open just in case. And then the final item I wanted to mention to you this evening is, at the last meeting, I mentioned to you that we did have a complaint on a possible illegal dumping, and I was going to look to employ the services of a legal firm to conduct that investigation. I know some of you feel that it would be better if the council is the one who approved that contract. I don't have an issue with that per se. There are some interesting ramifications with that. And I've given you a memo this afternoon in terms of kind of who I have been looking at. I don't know any of these people. I've got a recommendation in there, if that really is something that you would like to see, or you might have someone else on it. The question I have is, if the council is the contracting agent on this, is how do you want that to work? Do you still want whoever you contract with to work back either through the city attorney or myself? Or did you want them to work directly with the council? Because that creates some other interesting implications if you do it that way.
City manager.
I've got an idea.
I have my.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hornish. Okay, hold on. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so I think, given the sensitivity of this issue, I don't think we should be changing any procedures. I think we should be following documented procedures for how the selection of this would work, and that they would report to the city manager, and that any deviation from that is just going to look suspect. So I think it should follow normal procedures, and that's it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
I kind of agree with that, but I think what other normal procedures is what we need to kind of drill down on. When anytime the city contracts, it's the city as an entity that is contracting. Now, who acts for the city? I think both the council and the city manager can act for the city or as the city. I think in this instance, I think it would be good for the council to actually make the decision as to who it is. But then the city manager would be the point of contact for administering that contract.
City council would have to approve the contract, like, as would be the normal course. And I think maybe you and I are saying the same thing, Tom. Normal course, the city manager make a recommendation. Council's going to approve that contract or not. And if it's not, we'll come up with another recommendation for you, so.
Yeah, well, I think, but I think that's the point, that we're kind of turning on its head. It might be better to get council selection versus going through a group of three, four, five, no, 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 and finally getting to a yes versus finding out where the yes is, to begin with, from council.
Yeah, so we have an interim city manager. He has no history here, and to our detriment, probably not much of a future here. He's here on a limited term.
He's getting short all the time.
Well, but given that, he has, my point there being that he has no conflict of interest, no invested interest. He is the most neutral person in the room to make this selection.
That's correct.
And that, again, the normal procedure would be that he would bring something forward, and if we have a specific issue, then we can bring it up and discuss it. And if that's cause for us to say no to the contract, then fine. But I don't see why the city council is getting involved in a selection process like this, when that, that it just isn't the normal process, so.
Councilmember Ritchie.
I know we're not supposed to direct questions to specific council members. However, with due respect to Councilmember Hornish, I just kind of want to know why you're thinking what you're thinking.
Can I respond?
Please.
I just think that this is a high priority, high-profile issue, that we as council need to own it and take control of it to the extent that we can.
Okay. I don't disagree with that. I think that we get there either way. I think we own it as a council, we own it as a city, no matter what the results are. And we're asking, we're talking about an investigation. We're talking about trying to bring somebody in from the outside to see what happened, given the time, and I think, given the time since it happened, allegedly. And I think it's, at least as far as I'm concerned, just, it's an economy. It's an expediency of time to have us setting policy, yes, city manager, please go do these things to investigate this. He has, you know, and that includes hiring an outside, or interviewing, or vetting outside investigators to bring to us. I mean, if we can't find the right one, I mean, I guess I just look at it in terms of how we are going to spend our time, you know? And getting the seven of us together in a room, we're not going to be sitting down again for the rest of January, I think. So I think it makes sense to try to utilize the city manager's full-time status, this is what he does, to try to do that investigation, maybe come back first February with some potential options for us, and maybe an A, B, or C. I don't know. But something like that, that, it is urgent. It does need to be resolved. It does need to be investigated. I agree completely, but our council meeting schedule doesn't do that sufficiently for me. So I would support asking the city manager to continue the process as it's been laid out and bring us some options, and let's sit down and figure out what the right fit is.
And what I will do, if, again, unless the council has any objections, I will bring those options. But at the next council meeting, if I can get all these folks to make sure that we have no conflicts. The only difference, again, I have the ability for something, I think that this is going to be at certain level, that I could do this under a personal services contract, and I'd have the authority to do that, and I'd probably be doing that the next week. This way, I'm going to delay this for at least a couple of weeks until I get the council to approve a recommendation I'll bring to you, which I'm willing to do, so.
But I don't see why we'd wait. I don't understand.
It's really just a comfort level for the council, and I can do it either way, so.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I would prefer to stay with the normal procedures. None of us are experts or know this domain of area that we're going to be talking about. The city manager's going to be relying on staff and others who have some background in this area. The last thing I would like to happen is that we start squabbling over firms that we hear about at this point, and make it look like it's some political action, instead of what it is, is a standard investigation to see what's taking place. Already, there are words that people are starting to circulate names of different companies in the public, and that, that it may be uncalled for or may be called for. So let's investigate it, let it go through, and let's sit back and get the information and act when it's appropriate in the schedule, and not get ourselves into something that none of us have an expertise in. My two bits.
Do you need a motion, Mr. City Manager?
Just need to know what your direction is.
Please, go for it.
Go for it.
How do others feel? How does the rest of the council feel? I haven't heard from three other people.
Well, I think, I'll make a quick comment, but there was discussion that we had previously that can't be brought up out here that gives me pause. Deputy Mayor Moran brought it up. That's the only part that, that's really nondescript, I realize, but.
So, but I'm hearing you saying that you want council to then have the guidance. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing based on what I heard.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well, we can't talk about it out here.
No, well, all you need to talk about is whether or not you think council should have input and make a decision versus city manager. And given that, what I'm hearing you say is you think council. How does, how does the other two members feel?
So if we, can we go back to executive session? We have an executive session scheduled next anyway. It's pursuant to land acquisition. Can we add on? I can't remember what. It was, it was under litigation. Can we do it under litigation?
Sure. Potential litigation.
Potential, yes.
Well, can we go back there, and if we're out of the potential litigation, spank us?
No, just let the city manager do what he wants.
We want to act on it now, because we wait.
Yeah. Let me do this. Let me do this. I will, I will bring you a recommendation at your next council meeting.
All right, good. Good?
Yeah, we'll extend the process, but.
Unless you want to say what you have. Okay.
All right, executive session?
Yep.
All right.
So, was that everything you had, Mr. City Manager?
That's all I had.
Okay, so we do have, this is land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1B. How long?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay. We'll go twenty minutes, just to be sure. So fifteen, because that's all we have until we extend, actually.[1373.04] So fifteen because that's all we have until we extend, actually.
I move we adjourn.
Okay, well, hold on. I think we got to wait. Are they ready? We have to wait for him to get the screen off.
The sign went away, so I thought we were back. Oh, darn it.
How do we know when he's good, then?